Can't discuss out in public, so now I'm going to do public forum. If there's anyone out there that wants to share ideas, opinions, or ask questions regarding town government, speak now. Seeing none, moving on. Town manager appointment. The select board will consider confirming the town manager's appointment of Christopher Haymans. Is that how you say the name, Haymans?
Ah, okay.
To the position of treasurer-collector. Mr. Kamalu.
Through the chair, I think I have two things to point out. Number one, his name is Chris.
Chris?
Yes.
What did I say?
I'm sure.
I said Christopher.
Yeah, in all the interviews you've heard, everybody has mentioned about how we like hiring people named Chris in the finance department.
Yep.
Yeah. I am respectfully requesting the board affirm the town manager's appointment of Christopher Haymans as the town's next treasurer-collector. Chris, please. Yeah, Chris is joining the town with five and a half years' experience having worked for BNY Mellon as the vice president, lead manager, and partnership accounting, senior supervisor. He also worked one and a half years with Kaufman-Rossen Fund Services, Citigroup hedge fund services for four years, and he was at State Street for three years. He has a bachelor's degree in economics from the University of Massachusetts Amherst. When we spoke to his references, a previous supervisor noted Chris's particular strength in developing internal controls and documenting business practices. I think as you have heard, we are going full steam ahead in developing SOPs for everything that we do here at Town Hall. Chris's strengths include building commercial relationships with business institutions and stakeholders. He has particular experience in managing cash flows for multi-billion dollar portfolios of investments. He was professional, cool-headed, and service-oriented as a fund manager. We found Chris very attractive for us in this case. When we went into the hiring process, we were very open-minded. We understood that we may get applications from the private sector as well as from the private-public sector. And having interviewed, I think, Chris how many times? Three, four times? You went through, I think, two rounds of interviews, and then there was a final round which included a problem that you had to solve on behalf of, no, a problem that you had to solve presented to you by the CFO as well as the HR department. The first round of interview panels where the chief financial officer, Tim O'Leary, the Hopkinton Schools director of finance, Susan Rothermich, the town accountant, Dave Nalchagian, Hopkinton PT administrative manager, Anne Marie Corden, the assistant town manager, Elaine Lazarus, human resources director, Maria Casey. Second round of interviews, we had the CFO, Tim O'Leary, the assistant town manager, Lazarus, town accountant, Nalchagian, town manager, Norman Kumalu, as well as the HR generalist, Christian Merrill. Again, his experience in the private sector proved to us to be what we're looking for to continue to improve our treasury and collection function in town.
Nice. Thank you, Mr. Kamalu. Board members. Have anything?
Sure. Chris, I didn't catch it, but where do you live?
Framington.
Framington, okay, so it's not a bad commute?
No.
The commute in Massachusetts is one of the biggest drivers for people's happiness on the job, whatever it is they do, because it's so hard to move around these days. Great. I think the background speaks for itself, everything that Mr. Kamalu just laid out there, so we're happy to have you onboard and look forward to working with you. I'm Brian, by the way. You won't deal much with us, on occasion through him. He deals with us sometimes. But it's a great community, and we appreciate getting more professionals onboard and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erdo.
Yeah, I just have, I have one question. Your resume is outstanding, and you being a VP in the private sector and all of that sort of thing, my question is, why do you want to join municipal government?
It's a shift in my career I've been looking to take for a while. I've been pondering where I want to go from, you know, where I was, and I've done a lot of time in the corporate world, but I'm looking forward to having an opportunity to make a contribution at the end of the day and feel really good about what I do day in and day out.
Fair enough.
Well, that was actually very similar to what I was going to ask, is why the shift from public to pri-, from private to public sector. I'm Murphon, by the way. As a UMass grad, I'm particularly happy to see you.
Okay, he's done.
It's a great community. I think you'll be really happy here.
Thank you.
So, Chris, one question for you. Ever been stuck in a dryer?
Dryer?
I always look people's up Facebook.
Oh, yeah. Chris probably has young kids that said, "Dad, I'll give you five bucks and I can get out of that thing."
Whenever we have an applicant, I always bring up their Facebook, and you get some pretty cool stuff going on your Facebook, so.
I'd recommend going there, it's really good.
Yeah? I don't know what it is, but I don't think I could get out of that. So anytime that Mr. Kamalu puts somebody in front of us after their rigorous interview panels, plural, there's a good chance that they've done their due diligence, checked into things, done your background check, and you've passed muster. So I don't generally second-guess unless there was something maybe odd that might come up on a Facebook page. So I am, I definitely feel that you passed the muster, and I'm Brendan, by the way, and congratulations and welcome to the town.
Thanks, Brendan.
Thank you. Having said that, I will accept a motion to appoint.
I move to confirm the town manager's appointment of Christopher Haymans as treasurer-collector.
Okay, seconded? By anyone?
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? It carries. Congratulations. Welcome to town.
Welcome to town.
This is great.
Next up is consent agenda. Let's see, number one, the select board will considering the 11:15-19 select board meeting minutes. Number two, the library gift. The select board will considering a gift of $750 from the Hopkins Public Library Foundation to the Hopkins Public Library to fund a Lucky Day collection. And that's it. Anyone want to break any of those out?
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda is written.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? It carries? Thank you. So we have a 6:50 public, a posted public hearing, however, it's not that time yet, so we'll move on to the next agenda item if we can. Mr. O'Leary, are you ready to go with your general obligation bond approval?
Sir, I am.
All right, have a seat.
I have one slide that should be included in there. There's just one slide.
While we're waiting, why don't we move on to the street name approval, Whisper Way. The select board will consider approving a request from First Nation of 20th Century's Home to name an extension of Whisper Way as Whisper Way. The planning board has approved the subdivision plan, which alters the layout to the end of the existing road and provides for a short extension.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Good. So we have a road called Whisper Way today.
That's right.
It was an extension requested by the planning board.
Yes.
It's an extension of the same road, and we just want to keep calling it Whisper Way.
That's right.
I move the request to name the Whisper Way extension Whisper Way as presented this evening.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? It carries? Tim, you all set?
Yes, sir.
All right, welcome forward.
Sure. I'm here tonight with paperwork to sign bonds in support of $9,175,000 in previously-approved capital projects. In responding to our offering, we received bids from seven qualified investors with interest rates ranging from a low of 1.86401 to a high of just above 2.2%. I selected the low bidder, which was FTN Financial Capital Markets of Nashville, and our bonds will be issued on November 26th at the low 1.864% effective rate. That rate is the net effective cost of borrowing for us, considering all the 18 separate bonds that you're going to have to sign, which mature between 2020 and 2039, and they all have slightly different rates on the face of them. And when you aggregate all that math, it comes out to the 1.846% with different amounts, different stated interest rates, and then these bond premiums that are factored in as offsets. Looking at the market at the time of our bid, it seems like our AAA rating probably saved us about 2/10 of 1% on the borrowing cost, which over the life of the bond is a benefit worth about $100,000. So the bucket truck, I don't know if, that's about the price of the bucket truck, just for having the AAA rating, so that's great. Of the 9.2 million we're raising, most of it, about 7.2, will replace temporary borrowing that was previously approved by the select board and taken to support various projects. Those included the library, the Grove Street water tank, the turf field at the high school, and the athletic field lighting. So we did all those with temporary borrowings. This issue will institutionalize that debt. In terms of where the money's flowing, about 5.8 million in proceeds from the bond will support general fund projects. 2.6 million supports the Water Enterprise Fund, $85,000 for sewer enterprise costs for the capacity study, and $720,000 will cover athletic field lighting. The graph that I had, I don't know if it can go up, but I think you have a copy, there it is, is an update of the graph we put in the appropriation report for town meeting, and that shows where our annual principal and interest payments will be in the general fund after this borrowing. I believe you have a hard copy in front of you as well. The dashed line on the bottom shows what our debt burden looks like in terms of actual costs going out to 2047, with everything we've borrowed already, including tonight's borrowings. The little solid line that's above it includes a few more things that we were not ready to borrow for tonight because we didn't need the money right away. About $4 million in additional approved projects that we did not need to borrow for right now. So the benefit of that chart is it shows you what our, gives you a sense of what our borrowing capacity is going out as we look at other challenges in the town. The language in the motion you will need to pass tonight to complete the borrowing is on page 42 of the agenda packet, but I'm happy to answer any questions about this borrowing or our general debt situation.
Mr. Hurd?
Tim, the year that that drops down substantially there, where the yellow line kind of kicks in as well, what year is that? I can't see that.
That's about 2022, 2122, and it drops precipitously from about 8.5 million in expense down to about 6 million in expense and going down the, to the x-axis intercept, 2223.
Okay. So are you going to stick around for some of our later discussions about special town meeting articles and things like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I think we're going to pull this back up again at that time. I would like to, anyway, if that's okay with the chair.
We'll visit it when it comes up.
We'll debate it, then. This is indicative of where we are with our debt.
Right.
These are our mortgages.
Yes.
And these are our principal and interest payments.
Right.
Showing kind of what's going on, and we see that a lot of things are going to be coming off.
Yes.
Over the next several years, which is going to ease our expense line for debt and interest, or principal and interest, but it's also an opportunity, if we have to invest, to kind of reinvest without hitting the taxpayers beyond what we're already charging because it's built into the current budgets.
Okay.
And you probably understand that, and maybe, I don't understand anything I say sometimes, but I think that's an accurate statement. Is that true?
That's exactly accurate, and I have a couple fun facts if you want to just get a little background on this before we move to the next section, or even talk about this later.
So let me just kind of finish with another thought, though. So this is, this is our debt service and what's coming off the books, which is good because I know there's some initiatives to put other things back on the books. And my thing over the 12 years I've been kicking it around is debt service in the general operating budget at a flat line in that 4% to 6% range, or whatever it is, has been fairly steady, and that helps us budget from year to year to year. So this helps us look at what we can do for capital coming up. But my other question is, in this borrowing of this $9 million, is the corridor project involved in this borrowing at all?
The corridor project is involved in part. So $850,000 of corridor costs are in this project. We've already spent $166,000 of that, and we believe, based on current plans, to spend the rest of that in this fiscal year. And then we believe there's alternate funding to use for several years, and we'll be back for the balance of the town cost, which is 2.15 million later, like 2022.
So when we did the appropriation for the $3 million approximately, I'm talking sales guy numbers now, which is rounding to the simplest number, when we did the $3 million appropriation in 2018, Article 20.
Yes.
For the $3 million bucks, we're now, we've spent some of that, we've worked up, we've used that, if you will.
Yes.
Because we were authorized to spend, and now we got to go out and borrow to kind of backfill the books to cover that. What happens if that, that $800,000 that you say we need to go get now, what happens if this, if there's a challenge, or there's an issue coming out of special town meeting that could cause problems for that?
Okay, excellent question. We've already spent about $166,000 of that, and we believe an additional amount, up to about $500,000, is committed for design costs, appraisals, things we've already ordered. We haven't paid the bills, but we believe we have contractual commitments. So $500,000 of that will be gone, will be sunk and left. And the other 350 that we have, that we wanted to plan to spend to continue on the project, we've discussed this with bond council and our bankers, and we would come back to town meeting and to you and get that money shifted to support the new Main Street parking lot, which is also one of the projects, a like project that is not in this.
Hide the thing, yeah.
As part of the $4 million we've deferred borrowing on, because we're not ready to do that yet.
Got you.
But bond council saying it is $300,000 of a $9 million bond, they, and it's still authorized today, and it will still be authorized on the 26th of November when we execute the bonds. They said that level of possible change is not enough to upset the bond issue.
So one of my thoughts would be, why would we go out and borrow that 800K in advance of the special town meeting if we're going to waste, well, I guess we've already, not wasted, we've already spent 500 of it, I guess we got to pay those bills regardless.
Yes.
660, right? Not 500, 660, wasn't it?
We spent 166, and we have obligations that bring it up to about 550.
Up to 500.
So the 500, yeah, so the 500 is the 166 and the additional amount, the 338 that we believe we're committed to.
I'm not advocating we not go do it, but I'm just trying to understand what the risk is for the community.
Well, so this bond process has been a lengthy process, and when we initiated the process and went out to bid and went through rating and bond council, there was no prospect of the Main Street corridor not being done. We had absolutely no information that there would be a special town meeting, so we went forward through the whole process with the best information we had. The process itself costs about $100,000, so we were committed to going forward with this borrowing.
Mr. Kamalu, is there a, am I being a worrywart here, or do we have some risk here?
We, I think as through the chair, as Tim reported, we did discuss this issue with bond council. We have also discussed the issue with town council. He's continuing to help us assess if there's any risk going forward.
500 grand is clearly, if we don't use what we've designed, I mean, I guess that's, right?
Yes, if, if 550 or 560 is already committed, there are contracts that go along with that number.
So I'll just add that we have to pay off 5.3 million in temporary borrowing on December 12th, and we need the proceeds of this bond to do that. And if, for some reason, the bond got derailed, this borrowing got derailed, we would be facing more bid costs, we might be facing skepticism from people who bid on our bonds. I don't know what the liability would be if we walked away from our successful bidder. So I reviewed this with bond council, and their advice was, given that you have other like projects that you could divert that $350,000 to, it seemed most reasonable to go forward with the bond issue.
So we couldn't shave the 350 off this borrowing?
We cannot shave it off because the die is cast, the papers are printed, I have signed it, your signatures are pending, and we have a November 26 deadline to close on this deal. So without walking away from the closing, which we haven't even explored, we'll just take that money and, and we've tried to borrow the minimum amount of money to meet our needs. For example, we did not borrow for the fire truck because we weren't ready to use it for several months, and we thought we could do a temporary borrowing in the early summer to accommodate that. So we have really squeezed it down, but, you know, if it were 5 million of the 9 million, we would have had a much deeper conversation, but when the amount in play is 350 of the, and we need the 500 to pay the obligated cost anyways, when the amount in play is potentially 350 and we have an alternate plan, our commercial banker and the bond council felt the best thing was to stay the course.
So, I'm sorry, I got to open the hearing. Sorry, go ahead. All right, so I have to interrupt here for a moment. We have a posted public hearing at 6:50. I'm going to go ahead and open that, and then we'll ask you to hold off. We'll hold off talking about that until we're done with Mr. O'Leary and the general obligation bond.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board of selectmen open the posted public hearing for the tax classification hearing.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Carries? Thank you. John, hold up. We're still dealing with Tim.
So, so, you know, I've been pretty clear in recent weeks and months about my view on town meeting. I'm a purist when it comes to town meeting and the process of annual town meeting and the deliberative debate that takes place annually and has gone on for 300 years, and now we have a special town meeting, but now you're telling me we have 865K or so. It's in the midst of that discussion, and I'm struggling with borrowing 865 grand if we don't know if we're going to need it, or I guess.
So it's 350.
Well, okay, we're going to need 500 to pay the bills that we've already incurred, but the $365,000, so as a purist, the town meeting, the town meeting vote was for the corridor project. The town meeting vote in 2019 was for the, okay, okay, so the town meeting vote for 2019 was for the parking lot, so we could, for a like project, do that.
Go back and get that done. Yes, sir, and our, you know, after discussing it with the attorneys, our view was, town meeting voted to do this, we have moved forward in a reasonable and expeditious manner to do it. This borrowing is part of that. Town meeting has not undone that yet. So today, as of today, the position of the town meeting is that this project is going forward and until it's repealed. And so I think the basis for going forward is sound, and the economic reasoning for going forward is also sound, because to stop and interrupt a $9 million borrowing on the chance that town meeting might reverse course has tangible costs.
So it's really a $9 million obligation that this is tied to now, and not just the 865 grand? That doesn't make me feel any better, just so you know. It's a little bit more money, right? So now we're, I know we have to do those other projects, but the manner in which we're doing it could be very, very costly.
Sir, the, for example, the library work has been completed, we did it with temporary borrowing, we need to do this bond to permanitize the borrowing and pay the bill.
Allegory.
The fields, same thing.
Allegory.
The water tank, same thing. I mean, 5.5 million of this, 9 million has already been banned, and we need to satisfy those bans. So there's, those are things that the town meeting voted to do that have been done, that we borrowed appropriately for, through temporary borrowing that we now have to permanitize. The scale of this is that it's the $350,000, which we would be, cash we would be holding and paying 1.8% interest on, and the risk is we're paying 8.14% interest on money we might not need for this purpose, but bond council has indicated we could shift it to an alternate purpose. And then the cost of not doing it is the $100,000 we spent to issue the bond, and then we'd have to scramble to satisfy all our other obligations, because this is our plan for meeting our existing temporary borrowing. Does that make sense?
So, I apologize for all these questions. Am I the only one that this is causing a little angst from, for, or?
It's not causing, through the chair, it's not causing any angst to me. The way I'm kind of viewing this and using simple terms, it's just kind of refinancing a bunch of debt and kind of putting it all under one umbrella. So as I understand it, the entire 9 million is committed at this point, but there is a chance that there may be 350 left over afterwards, which could be applied to a separate project, right?
Yes.
But the, out of that 9 million, there's only the 350 that's in question, everything else is basically refinancing prior debts.
Or somebody starts. But 97% of the money is on track for its intended purposes irrespective of what the town meeting outcome is. It is the 3% tied to the Main Street corridor which could be in doubt. And I shared your concerns. I became very concerned about this and whether we could sign with this looming, and the bond council said that we could and that it makes economic sense to do so. So I don't, I didn't view it as presumptive toward the town meeting. Right now, we're standing on town meeting approval of that project, and it seemed that we needed to act as if that, that approval has standing and not presume that the town meeting is going to change course. We don't know what's going to happen. Whatever happens, we'll be compliant, but this is a compliant path to meeting all of our obligations at the lowest cost.
Yeah, I guess, I just, I see the 865K or whatever, that's the number in my head that's tied to that project coming out of that town meeting that's at risk. Maybe 350 is what's left at risk, the other 500 is at risk too, in many ways, right? So, okay, I understand, I understand. I'm good.
Just, the other 500 would be a sunk cost if we abandoned the project. That would be the cost of abandoning the project and starting over with a different plan through a new Main Street, unless there's other costs I'm not aware of. But that money would be gone because we would have a design that we would not be using, and we would have appraisals that we may not use. So, so that would be one of the things that people might consider when thinking of changing course, is that we have invested money already.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rick?
Just one last, a couple little questions. Out of the 860, or 850 that, of the prior, prior debts and the new, new starts, if we just focus on the prior debts, are we effectively lowering our rates?
So we, those are, those are temporary borrowing?
Temporary borrowings.
So was the temporary borrowing at a higher rate than what we're?
You know, I don't recall what the ban was. It happened right when I, like, my first few weeks, Mike was up here and he came in with a ban. We can borrow at good rates because of our rating, so the temporary borrowings are not bad. The nice thing about the bond is now we're locking in for 1.8% for a very long time. And, you know, there's a yield curve, so the farther out you go, you typically pay more. So it's pretty good for us to lock in the, the, this rate for the long term now.
Okay. Thank you. I'm all set.
Okay, we're all set? All right. Tim, thank you.
So as your parliamentarian, I do believe we need to take a vote to authorize the CFO to.
It's on 42 of the package.
In fact, if I may, the board may move a motion as presented in your meeting packet. I think it's a five, six-page long motion.
Yes, it is.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that the board of selectmen approve the general bond obligation approval as detailed in the board of select board packet for this evening, Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, as written.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Carries? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, and there will be a signing party later, I guess.
I got it right here, yeah.
Lot of money.
If I may, through...
Yep. Go ahead.
As we have announced at previous select board meetings...
I was just gonna do the same thing.
Go ahead.
Bill's?
Yes.
Yeah, so if anybody here has parked at Bill's Pizza over there, that is not the town's property. We don't have a right to park there, and they are well in their right to tow your car. So if you're parked there, they are very unhappy that we have, rightfully unhappy that we kind of monopolize their back lot on occasion. So if you're parked out there, I would suggest that you move it, or you will more than likely have it. Thank you. All right, back to our posted public hearing. Mr. Neese.
Thank you. To the select boards and citizens of Hopkinton, the Board of Assessors is here to inform you about the decisions that you're to make tonight, so give you some information so you can appropriately make the choices. There are four different items on the agenda that you need to vote on. One is selection of the residential factor, or whether to shift the tax burden from the residential and open space class to the commercial, industrial, and personal property class, and if so, by what percentage. Number two is whether or not to grant an open space discount. The third is whether or not to grant a residential exemption. And the fourth is whether or not to grant a small commercial exemption. Now, all four of these either, because they are lowering the tax rates on some groups or on parts of some groups, raise the tax rates on others. And many of them, as you can see in the letter, there are very, very few communities that actually vote for them. What we wanted to touch on before John Neese, our principal assessor, goes into the actual graphs, was just a little bit of information about the current single-family property assessment, which is at $632,500, $600,500 compared to last year where it was $599,000, so about $600,000. The new growth for the fiscal year was $134,920-ish thousand, as opposed to last year where it was $131.3 million. The largest categories that we've had in the new growth include a single-family class at $23,100,000, and then the condominium class at $59,395,000, and the personal property class at $32,226,000. The most significant contributor has been the growth of condominiums. So this year, we had a total new amount of condominiums of 1,293 units, and that was about an average assessment of $361,000 compared to a total of 970 condominium units and an average assessment of $399,000 last year. So the Board of Assessors, which includes Leslie Picari and Buna Mehdi, will now turn it over to our principal assessor to go through some graphs for you about comparables.
So hello, everyone.
Hello.
And I would like to thank the Board of Assessors and my staff and the CFO and the town accountant for all the work they have done on this issue as well. So I'm gonna take you through just a few PowerPoint slides, make some comments for you, and I will be happy to answer any questions you have as well. So the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2020 is $16.83 for residential property and $16.81 for commercial, industrial, and personal property. Now, as always, these rates are subject to some minor variation while we go through the remainder of the approval process with the Department of Revenue. They usually don't change, but they could change, they could change slightly. I would like to make it clear that even though we are showing a different rate on that screen, that this is not a split tax rate. That is simply a function of the new means-tested senior exemption that you voted for this year. And the typical exemptions that we have every year for blind elderly seniors, CPA, veterans, and the senior work-off program are all funded through the overlay account, so they have no effect on the tax rate.
Is that Gold Star families as well?
I'm sorry?
Gold Star families as well?
Yes. So this is a copy of the legislation, and I know you are familiar with it, but it makes it very clear that the total amount exempted under the new means-tested senior exemption shall be allocated proportionately within the levy on all residential taxpayers. And no exemption shall be granted until the Department of Revenue certifies a residential tax rate where the total exemption amount is raised by a burden shift within the residential tax levy. So I just wanted to point that out to you. So in general, the different classes of property have increased from 2% to 10%. If we go to the next one, this just shows it to you a little bit graphically. And we have, as usual, for the residents, not available until tomorrow or the next day, but we have two notebooks in hard copy. They get placed on the assessors' counter and in the library. They also put the information on the website. But it contains an alphabetical listing of every property in town by street address with the prior value, the current value for fiscal 2020, the dollar difference, and the ratio difference. So every resident can look at what their particular individual property increased by. It also includes the printout on the personal property values in town. And then it includes a property record card on all of the arm's length transfers for calendar year 2018. So if, oh, we've gone to the next one again. This just shows graphically the split that is in the letter, but basically, we are in 84% residential community and a 16% commercial, industrial, and personal property community. If we go to the next one, again, just graphically shows the difference in value and the difference in tax over time. The column on the far right is fiscal year 2020 and shows what Leah has told you is an average residential value of $632,500 for a single family. If we go to the next one, this just shows the average tax bill for a single-family property over the same period of time for fiscal year 2020. Again, to the far right, an estimated annual tax bill of $10,650, or about a 3.5% over the average annual tax bill for the previous year. We go to the next one. You have asked before, and like a comparison of Hopkinton, which is the second column from the left, as opposed to some other communities. In this graph, it's compared to Holliston, Medfield, Southborough, and Westborough. Maybe one more. This shows you the effect of shifting the tax rate or going to a split rate between residential property and commercial, industrial, and personal property. I'm not advocating for anything in particular, but we wanted to show you that the blue is that if you shift the tax rate by 5%, 10%, 15%, 20%, or 25%, the blue will show what the reduction in the average annual single-family or residential tax burden will be and the corresponding increase to that 2A property in the commercial, industrial, and personal property class.
John, that's based on the 84-16 breakdown?
Yes, it is.
84% 16.
And it shows, unfortunately, in Hopkinton, because of that split, a disproportionate difference by saving the residential taxpayer some sum of money. And I can go through those numbers if you'd like. I have them on the chart, but the corresponding increase in the commercial, industrial, or personal property. And two more. This shows the excess levy, again, over a serious, a similar period of time. And then the last slide, and I'll be happy to take questions, but when we started the presentation, it was suggested that you have to take a vote on all of these issues, whether or not to grant an open space discount, whether or not to grant a residential exemption. And again, that is separate from the means-tested exemption, because that's already been proved, whether or not to grant a small commercial exemption, and whether or not to have a single tax rate or a split tax rate. And the LA 5 needs to be signed by the majority of the board at the end of your meeting in order to move forward in setting the tax rate. So I'm happy to make any questions.
So are there any questions from the board members? Mr. Hur, why don't you start us?
The 84-16, I believe that's a little bit of progress. I thought it was always 85-15 for the last 30 years.
I can't tell you exactly, but it's been very similar to the 84-16 split over the last several years.
All right, so, all right. You mentioned a 2020 excess levy of 300-some K? I thought the underwrite cleared the excess levy, or was that just through that fiscal year, and then it carried over, some carried over?
New growth, it's excess levy, right?
I'm gonna sort of pass that to the CFO if he can help, but the excess levy number on that slide comes from the LA 5 in the Gateway System, which comes after the entry of the total value of the town and the split between the different classes of property. And it will give us that excess levy figure. So I know there have been some differences because of your underwrite. And if you look back at the previous year where you were at 1.9 million in excess levy, I'm thinking that maybe the 342 currently is a result of that underwrite, but I don't know.
I believe that's how the mechanics of it work.
So we just have to generally chip away at that if we want it to completely go away, for several years to make it fully go away, as long as the values keep going up.
I believe if you wanted to do that, you would have to do it every year, because I think you could grow some new excess levy in the process because of new growth.
Because of the valuations too.
And the valuation of the new growth. I think, I think if that was your strategy, it would require an annual action to do that.
Right, so the dialogue around the underwrite, the last underwrite, the third underwrite, was this'll wipe us clean. So it wiped us clean in that fiscal year, but it didn't wipe us clean going forward, and this could, this'll grow again too, so, okay, not a bad problem to have.
And if I could back up for a minute, so I didn't know that I had the paperwork, but for fiscal year 2020, the residential portion is 83.9412%. The balance would be commercial, industrial, and personal grouped together, so 83.9412. For fiscal year 2019, the residential portion was 83.6661.
Yeah, it's definitely slightly tweaking downward, which is not a bad thing.
The bump this year, sir, was in personal property. There was a $32 million bump in personal property in part because of the effort to the assessors to identify new assets that have not been captured before.
Yes, just wanted to ask about the open space discount. What would that specifically apply to? Is that like if you had wetlands that are unusable? Or is it just something approved by the planning board as an open space area?
So let me see if I can answer it this way. First of all, there's a little bit of a misconception of the open space classification. So you can have chapter land, for example, or you can have excess land with your own residential property that is sort of open in appearance, wooded, recreational. That's not what we're talking about when we talk about the open space classification. And wetlands, for example, you know, already receives a discount in our, in our CAMA system. The open space is a specific state classification code of 201. And generally, in Hopkinton, not generally, but pretty much in each case in Hopkinton, it includes property that the planning board previously had required a developer to retain as open space in a new subdivision.
Okay, so would this also, would it also apply to like land that has a conservation restriction on it?
No, but that, that would be, you know, wetlands or land that is undevelopable or something with a conservation restriction would have a lower value by virtue of some type of discount in the system, but still would not receive an open space discount.
Okay.
So the total tax revenue from open space is under $2,500 townwide. The valuation is only $143,000. So that the whole pool is, we report it because it's a category of the state.
And for, for an open space discount, there is only one community in the entire state of Massachusetts, which is Bedford, that has an open space discount?
Mm-hmm.
Does it have an open space discount?
It does.
Yeah, only Bedford is the only one that does. So we're good for the board? So this is a public hearing. So would anyone in attendance like to comment on this? Mr. Terry, come on up.
This may not be the subject that we're on, but it has to do with tax revenue. It's something that I've been thinking about for a few years. Has to do with motor vehicle excise taxes. And is there a way to make sure that everyone that's moving into town is re-registering their car or truck or new vehicle in our town? My suggestion might be, if we took a list of the last, not last year, but the year before that and the year before that, and if we brought that group names up on a list as new owners in town, could we then compare that, that each one of those is paying excise on a vehicle or two? Is that something that's legal?
Can you answer that now?
If you'd like, I'm certainly not gonna.
I think, at first, to be honest, I think we'll take the suggestion under advisement, but I think the answer is probably yes. The Registry of Motor Vehicles has a brand-new computerized system, so I would think that we could do some kind of cross-check on that. But I can't tell you without talking to them.
Yeah, could you look into it?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. All right.
I just want to make a comment. Having been in that chair many, many times presenting classification hearing, I just want to thank Leah Battle-Rafferty for taking my place.
We're missing your cheesecake.
Cheesecake? All right, so saying no more comments, I will look to the board to close the public hearing. So move. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Okay, are we ready to vote on that?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstain, carries? Okay, so now it's board deliberation. Who's got what, or have we already done?
So we have four questions before us. The open space, and maybe if we could put those back up on the screen there to kind of help us walk through it. And this process over the years has been a very consistent, predictable process as far as, at the board level goes. We haven't changed our mind on this in a long time. I just want to, just want to refresh, my memory anyway, of where have we voted on these four questions in the past? I know the single tax rate is yes, we stay with a single tax rate. At least that's been the past. I'm not saying that's what we're doing tonight, but that's the past. But the small commercial exemption to residential and the open space, I'm trying to remember, because I don't, I know we voted those in the past, but on all those, we've been consistently a no. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so fair enough with that question. My next question is specific to the commercial, and I'm a single tax rate person, so that's where I'll go, but this question has come up a couple times in about the last two years, maybe three years now. The commercial rate, while we're staying with the single tax, so they're not getting that huge spike because we're bailing on 2% and they're picking up 10%.
that huge spike because we're bailing on two percent and they're picking up twenty percent. We're staying with that single rate, but their valuations have changed, and it's my understanding that it's gone from more, less of a square footage and general appraisal valuation, building condition, size, et cetera, location, all those typical variables, to more of an income-based valuation, or an income piece of the puzzle is added into the other, all, the whole valuation. And that has changed the valuations of some of these commercial properties, some of them not knowing that this was going on, and some frustration with that piece of the process. But this income valuation addition, that is new to town? Is that a fair statement within the last couple of years?
Yes.
Okay, so it's new to town.
So it was new last year, and it's done now. So the, it's a new normal now, it doesn't happen again every year. It is a, the impact was felt last year, and we do not believe it will be felt again this year. Does that make sense? We shifted methods.
Got it.
And the baseline has changed, and now we're back in a trajectory that is less erratic.
Okay.
I mean, if you want a short explanation, I mean, there are three standard approaches to that, the cost, sales, and income, but income-producing property is usually sold and purchased by investors on an income basis, so for the longest time, they were valued essentially by a hybrid cost-sales comparison approach, which is not the way those properties are transferred. So we made a decision a couple of years ago to make income-producing property valued by the income approached about it, and as Tim has said, that has been completed, so that future values with those properties should be from that business.
So before we get in any further, I know we've had a whole bunch of more people show up here, you all have to know that if you're parked in Bill's Pizza Lot, if anyone's parked there, they're going to start towing cars. If it's not our lot, we're not able to park there, so if you're parked there, you need to move it.
So back to the income valuation question, and I can understand it would be that one year spike or variation, some went up, well, some went down, obviously too, because it's still balanced out. But it's my understanding, in talking with some of the folks in that, in that world, and I do some business in the, in the commercial real estate markets as well, the income valuation is tied to the credit worthiness in a lot of cases of the tenants in those buildings and not the buildings themselves. So the income coming to that building and the, the value of that tenant and its credit worthiness is a formula that that industry uses to gauge their revenue streams for future years and things along those lines. And there's some question about how, how does the town understand the income opportunities in some of those businesses, or those commercial real estate owners' lives or businesses, without getting into the details of the, of the credit worthiness, a lot of other sort of private information that may or may not be available to the public, in the public domain?
I'll start with a short answer, and I'll be happy to expand if you want.
I like the smile on your face, that tells me something's coming.
But we are authorized under the statute to require income-producing property owners to supply us with their income and expense information every year. So we send out through the mail a request for that information with a list of instructions and a form specific to that individual property. They, of course, as an individual property owner, have the option to supply us with that information or not. If they don't return it to us, we send out a second request. And the second request, the first request as well, but the second request will remind them that they have probably lost their right to appeal their value to the appellate tax board, that's in, that's in the language, that they will now face a fifty or a two-hundred and fifty dollar fine depending upon the class of property that it is. And we have instituted that fine in Hopkinton because we are constantly told by the Department of Revenue that we have to do a better job of collecting that information, so that's one way to do it. They also run the risk of not getting what you might refer to as a certificate in good standing. So if they apply, they have a new tenant who wants a new sign, and they apply to the tax collector, and they have an unpaid portion of their tax bill or this fine on their property, then they cannot get that permission, you know, to do what they might want to. So to further answer your question, we try and collect as much of that as we can. We have about a hundred and sixty commercial or industrial properties. We get at least fifty or sixty to seventy percent of those property owners to return that information to us. With the ones that don't return it, we have to model their value based on what we know from other owners. All that information is confidential, but if we know that people are paying a certain rent for a barber shop, or a pharmacy, or a restaurant, then if they don't return the information, we can use the information we have to model the income on another property. That information all supplies us with income information, and those owners are more than welcome, number one, to meet with us at any time, or number two, to supply us with that information, what they believe to be the credit worthiness of their tenants. I'm not sure how else to explain it to you.
But their credit scores or anything like that don't come into play at all. It's their income and expenses, what they're actually doing in terms of money.
Mr. Chairman, I was adding a data point about this year, because we have the experience from this year today, we developed it this afternoon, we looked at it, and I'll do it very quickly. The whole commercial class did go up by sixteen million dollars, or about ten percent, ten point four percent this year, but thirteen million of that was new growth, new construction and new renovation improvements. For the, for the group that excluded new growth, the increase in valuation was two percent. So I think some people may have keyed in on the ten percent idea that the values were going up ten percent, but that includes both new growth and the market value. Our assessment this year found market values went up two percent, two point zero five percent in that category.
So, so the, the process of reaching out to the commercial building owners and getting that information back, is that somewhat new too, or has that been going on forever?
Thirty years. I was doing it when I was the administrator in the assessor's office, sending out the income and expense forms every single year for at least thirty years now.
So I think-
Before that also, but.
Based on what I've heard in town over the last couple of years, and we kind of know some of the folks that have spoken up about it, I would suggest we, I'm going to table this thought for right now, but when we come to future agenda items, I'm going to ask maybe that if we have a joint meeting with the board of assessors, the team, everybody sitting down together, and we talk about this, and we invite some of those folks in and hear what they're talking about too, I think that would help all of us understand the process, but also understand the expectations going forward too. And I think that would, I think it would go a long way in sort of resolving some of the concerns some folks have.
If I could just comment, I think that would be a wonderful idea, and I did in fact meet with that committee, I forget exactly what it's called, Economic Growth Committee or something like that, with a lot of these commercial and industrial property owners to explain this situation to them, but I'd be happy to have that meeting with you.
Yeah, if we all do it together, I think that we can cover a lot of different bases at the same time. So we'll do a future agenda, thank you.
I'm good. All right, Leslie?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just, I just wanted to say also that John has done a good job of reaching out to these folks, and he is very focused on bringing in the revenue to our town. And so what you might be hearing, Brian, is that he has been a little dogged about pulling out and getting that information. So where things might have fallen through the cracks before, where he's a little bit more, and Ruth and Stuart are on top of this much more, so that might be what you're hearing.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I will entertain a motion, four motions, I guess.
So I move that we do not grant an open space exemption.
Second.
Mr. Tamal, is that motion in order?
It's in the negative.
No, it's second.
So move, move the motion through the chair.
Do we have a motion doc for this?
So I move-
I request a motion to not grant an open space exemption.
I recommend wording it differently. I move the motion as granting, and then the board will vote the way it seems fit.
Okay, so we want to grant them? So it's the same thing, so it's, I request a motion to grant an open space exemption.
Exactly.
Okay. So moved.
It was moved already, it just needs to be second.
Oh, okay, I see.
You made the motion. I read it. So it was made.
By you?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We don't want- So this is, yeah, you said no, I caught.
You got half an eye out there.
Okay, I move to grant a residential exemption.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? And opposed?
Aye.
And abstain? Carries?
I move to grant a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? And opposed?
Aye.
Carries?
I move to approve a single tax rate for fiscal year twenty.
Okay, any further discussion?
Second.
Yep, sorry, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And a carries? All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, nice, nice presentation, nice job.
To sign the LA five form for the Mass Department of Revenue?
John, second that. So I will do a, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First of the LA five.
I will do a future agenda item.
So seeing that the time is at seven thirty, we have a public hearing for street acceptance for Legacy Farms North. The select board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Mass Generalize Chapter eighty-two, subsection twenty-one, to discuss accepting and laying out Legacy Farms North from Franklin Road to Wilson Street as a public way. There will be an article on the December nine, two thousand and nineteen special town meeting warrant requesting the acceptance of the street as a public way. The special town meeting article has been submitted by citizens petition.
Mr. Chair, I move that we open a public hearing for the street acceptance of Legacy Farms North.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? It carries? Okay, we are open. So the select board as road commissioners is required to hold a public hearing prior to any town meeting vote to accept the street as a public way. The street acceptance process is, select board refers the street acceptance proposal to the planning board, select board holds a public hearing and approves the road layout, select board files its vote layout with the town clerk at least seven days before town meeting. A town, I'm sorry, a plan showing the layout of the road must be filed with the town clerk at least seven days before town meeting. Let's go through the items one by one with the dates required. So the first requirement was notify property owner of public hearing. That was done on November twelve. Refer article to planning board. That was done November thirteen. Public hearing notice to town clerk was done November thirteen. Select board hearing is what we're doing right now. The deadline for select board to file its layout vote with the town clerk is December two. The deadline for a layout plan to be filed with the town clerk is also December two. The deadline for planning board report, planning board has forty-five days from November thirteenth, which is December twenty-eighth, but this is after the special town meeting date is December nine. Following a town meeting vote to accept the street as a public way, there is a taking process whereby the town establishes ownership of the roadway and drainage and other easements that go along with it. We have received written comments from the DPW director, from the conservation administrator. Would a representative of the citizens petitioners like to make a presentation at this time? Okay, come on up. Name and address, please?
Ravi Gordi, fifteen Spruce Street.
Fifteen School Street?
Spruce Street.
Spruce Street, okay. Okay, go ahead.
All right, good evening, everyone. So we just wanted to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to talk about the Legacy Farms Road school issue that we've been facing for a while, for a while. Where, as you all know, Legacy Farms is, a lot of the residents in Legacy Farms are relatively new residents to Hopkinton. Most of us have moved here one and a half years, at the most, two years ago. And we've been trying to, ever since the first resident moved into Legacy Farms, we were hoping, the school bus stop issue has been a concern, and a lot of us have brought it to the attention of a lot of the decision makers here. But unfortunately, despite all the meetings and despite all the effort, we're still struggling that nothing has happened here yet. It's, the, all our efforts are kind of draining us, and, and it's kind of unfortunate that we're having to do this as a, as a citizens petition, as a last resort, but we definitely are looking for, to cooperate and come up with a solution that works for all, but we're, we definitely want to talk about a solution that I think will help alleviate the issue here. So can I just, can we see the slides here? So I just want to point your attention to just two slides here. The first one is just, a lot of you have seen these photos already, but I wanted to point everybody's attention to slide number five here, which shows the extremely long line of cars waiting for the bus stop in the mornings, and also you have the same issue in the evenings as well, in the afternoon when the school bus stops, the kids back as well.
How many cars is in that slide?
I would say at least thirty cars, and in fact, this one, that's, you can see there, it's about thirty to thirty-five cars.
And there are thirty to thirty-five kids on the bus at that one particular bus stop?
No, in fact, what we do is, because there's, obviously there's no parking place there for all the cars, we carpool. Each car has between two to three kids at the minimum.
So there's seventy to ninety-five kids on that one bus stop?
Yes, and especially the elementary school pickup time, yes, there's quite a few kids.
So do we have a, well, I guess we don't have a member of the school committee here, but is there a school bus that we have that has a capacity of ninety-five kids?
I don't know if it's, I'm, I'm not saying all cars have three kids in them, but some of them have, we carpool, but I-
So if there's thirty-five cars there, there's a minimum-
At the minimum.
Minimum thirty-five-
Absolutely, yes.
At one bus stop at one time.
Yes, yes. And I think I'll just move the, so we've talked about a number of potential solutions, and we've, we've also talked with Mr. Westling and a lot of other employees of the town of Hopkinton. And we have a list of items that were expressed as concerns or items that need to be finalized before the Legacy Farms Road North is accepted as a public road. And we just wanted to talk about some, some of those concerns and what we think we should be doing, which is, so this is just a quick list of the Mr. Westling's concerns from his email, are items that he wanted to, questions that he wanted answered. And we were proposing that we just have a discussion about which of those items Mr. McDowell is, is willing to pay for, and which of those items he's not going to be paying for. And then I think in terms of next steps, we would like to have a memorandum of understanding to make, to kind of tie it down, and then proceed to the next steps.
So, Ravi, I just need to let you know that this is, we have a certain, we have a amount of time that we're allowed to allow you to do your presentation. I want you to get in as much as you possibly can before we have to cut.
No, and I'm done. I just wanted to give an opportunity to my, my neighbors to express some of their concerns as well, is that possible?
So, um... So before we open it up to the public, you know, much as we've done, there's been a lot of items that have come before us recently that brought a lot of community spirit, so I don't think there's probably a lot of people that are here to speak against this. So what we ask you to do, if you're going to come up and comment on it, if you have a comment, we don't want you to parrot the next person, the next person. So if you have a, a point that you think after the first person speaks, if the next person comes up and just says that I'm in favor, and I'm in favor, and I'm in favor, we get it. We know that you're probably in favor of it.
Yes.
If you have another selling point, something else that might, that might get us to raise our eyebrows, then by all means, but you know, when- might get us to raise our eyebrows, then by all means, but you know, we need to cut off the...
Makes sense. Yeah, we only have thirty minutes, we get it. All right. Thanks.
So, uh, that said, is there anyone out there, uh, that wants to come out and have something to say? Come on up? Tell us what your name and address is and you got two minutes.
Sure. My name is Nikhil Kapur. My address is twenty-seven Walnut Way. I don't have a lot to say. The only thing I would kind of urge again to consider this more seriously is because the new house is being built right now. The line of cars that you see, the, the problem is only gonna get worse with us trying to find a spot so we can par, park our car in either rain or snow, whatever the weather is, and try to kind of drop our kids to safely to the school bus. So just wanna consider that there, there's gonna be more houses built and, and this might get a little bigger issue in the process. That's all.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Lot more houses to be built. Ravi, as the spokesman, what would you say is the percentage of people at the bus stop that drive their children to the bus versus the percentage of the people that walk to the bus?
I would say majority of them drive to the bus stop.
Ninety-five-five, seventy-thirty?
Ninety-five-five, close to that for sure.
Thank you. Yes?
Hello, everybody. I am Radhika Sangredi and, uh, I reside in fifteen Spruce Street and, uh, I am the mother of a, a eleven-year-old lanky daughter who is in sixth grade. And, um, as probably most of you know, with like the, uh, higher demands of education, right, like compared to what I have seen in the previous grades, now my daughter has to carry a laptop, she carries gym gear, she carries a Viola at times too. And when the weather is good for her to walk back, which is like close to a mile, it's difficult, right? Like she's carrying all of these and it's not an easy, and I'm not saying that, um, it's going to get any better in the winters, right? Like if she has to alter gear, the winter gear. And apart from that, it, it makes me concerned that that road is not necessarily a private road. It's a public road and the cars are zooming by and it, it, and it concerns me. And I am working and I feel like it's been rough the past. We moved here from New York and we moved here thinking that it's going to be a great community and I've been really happy with everything that Hopkinton has given us so far, right? Like, um, we love the, we love the town, we love the school, we, um, love the people around us and, you know, everything that I ever wanted, I'm getting in Hopkinton except for this feeling of anxiety that I have to, you know, figure out, how is my daughter going to get to school? I looked at care.com, looked at hiring somebody who is charging seventeen dollars an hour and at least wants to come for two hours and it's not even like a guaranteed support because it's a temporary job for them, right? Like nobody wants to just be making approximately six hundred dollars a month doing this work and it's not even a consistent source of support for me. So I feel like it's affecting my personal life, like I get anxious at work thinking about how am I going to do this? I have two graduate degrees and I've struggled hard to get to where I am right now and I feel like I shouldn't be taking this burden on top of everything that I'm already doing. So I'm hoping that, it takes a village to raise a child, right? And I'm hoping that this village will help raise all of these children to help parents make it easier for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
All citizens are allowed to speak, right?
Sure. If you're good with her being on the television.
Is it okay if I sit next to her?
Absolutely.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Arushi Sheh and I live on forty-four Spruce Street. I'm here to request your help about changing the bus stop as proposed. I use this bus stop and I have personally experienced the many dangers and inconveniences that this brings on a daily basis. Please help me and two hundred other Hopkinton students in making it safer for us to get to school every day. Thank you.
Thank you. That took a lot of courage. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Try to beat that.
Hi, um, I'm Carla from, uh, One Juniper Trail, Legacy Farms North, and thank you for giving us this opportunity. I'm, I'm just gonna add into what my friends put forth, uh, about the, the difficulty of the situation. To me, it looks like it's increasing. It, it's increasing almost exponentially with each factor around. Like kids keep, like they said, kid keep increasing and the line of cars gets longer. I park my car, even if I come ten minutes earlier than the bus, I'm the twenty-fifth car. That's almost halfway through home. It, I can just walk from home instead of that. So I park the car and then we have to walk all the way. And then we carpool, like he said, it's, it's two and, like, I carpool with three kids. And, and then when the kids see the bus from far, they scram, they're like, oh my god, the bus is here and, and, and getting to control our kids and the others' kids, uh, whom we're getting familiar with, um, is kind of a difficulty. And then to add on that, the traffic, I, I guess it's, except for the Hopkinton school buses, everybody else treats it like a public road. So, uh, with, with no speed limits and people pass and, uh, the bus flashing its lights or not, either ways. So we've seen all those scenarios and it's kind of scary. It's an accident waiting to happen, we have to take care of the kids. So, so the traffic is adding to it. And then comes the rain, the ice, the snow, and, um, the line getting longer is making it difficult for us. So it's, it's, it's just, it's, it's first for the kids, the school bus, the safety, and it's also for all of us, that it, it would be better if that road be treated properly. Thank you.
Thank you. So we realize it's not easy to come up here and speak in, in public. You guys are doing a good job. It's easier for some.
My name is Srini Vijay from nineteen Juniper Trail. So my neighbors have spoken about how difficult it is to get to the bus stop, how difficult it is to maintain the kids in the bus stop to get into the bus or get off the bus, get into the car, go back home. I'm here to throw some facts that we, uh, tried to pursue a few options and what it is, uh, like for us for the past couple of years. I'm sure Roy McDowell here knows more, uh, on these facts because he has also been helping us, uh, in the due course of, uh, trying these options. So we tried a few options before we got here with the citizens petition. Option one was, uh, though this road is treated as private, is there a way we can get any other commute, uh, through a different private vendor to drop the kids either at the bus stop or to the school? And the cost of that was skyrocketing. Roy tried it very diligently to see if there is a possibility. And the second option that we had was luxury, uh, coaches or buses, uh, which was way too expensive, three fifty thousand, four hundred thousand, uh, per year for us to get that in. Nobody is willing to do that for that amount. We can as well make the road public, make it even more beautiful than what it is right now and have the public traffic go by. So the last resort, what we are trying to achieve here is move the citizens petition. Though the road is private, there is an empty number of traffic that bypasses one thirty-five to take this road for eighty-five north and south. And this is fresh from yesterday when I was picking up my kids from the bus stop along with other, uh, two kids from my neighbors. A pickup truck literally passed...
Ten seconds.
Sorry?
Yeah, ten seconds.
Sure. My, the pickup truck literally passed us and I was waving hands, he wasn't even apologizing to do that. And the school bus driver was, uh, talking phrases that you have to keep doing it, like we can keep doing it, but it's not going to work out. So we request everyone here, uh, to consider this road public as soon as possible and help us alleviate our pain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Salute.
Hi, this is Arpudraj from One Juniper Trail. Uh, I'm just adding, uh, uh, one more point with, uh, my community friends. So the, the process of getting, you know, this issue get resolved started like two years back, uh, the lesser people and then people getting added now. And then, uh, we're still trying to get it. And if you see like, uh, if the, the road is going to get accepted as public road, you know, all the construction has to be completed and those kind of, you know, laws are there. But this forecasted as like, you know, it will take minimum of, uh, around four years to complete, uh, the construction. So the road can be accepted as public and then the process may take another one year or so. So this, you know, what are the problems we are facing is going to have like another five years minimum, uh, down the line. So just trying to mention that point here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready? Mr. McDowell? Sure.
Roy McDowell, Legacy Farms. I understand the neighbors frustration and frankly, I, I don't disagree with it. As, as was mentioned earlier, we tried to spend significant time with bus companies offering to buy extra insurance for them. One eighty-three's Main Street, none of that seemed to work. So what we're doing is we've signed a contract this past week with Western Nurseries. We're gonna be doing the entire planting on that road this spring, ideally late March, early April, whenever the weather's conducive. So that we're gonna get done before the end of April. We want to pave the road right thereafter. We want to completely finish the road, ideally before town meeting, but at least in May. So we want to finish the road, we want to finish the seating of the shoulders, we want to finish the planting, we want it fully complete. Now, that being said, I saw, I got a, a copy of a letter that the Conservation Commission sent to you, that, that they're afraid, they're concerned that if you approve the road at town meeting, that number one, the road won't be done. I will tell you, there's a bond outstanding that's more than twice the cost to finish the work. And I've said here in public, we're gonna do the work first part of the spring. The other concern they have is, uh, if there are any outstanding issues, because the town has approved it, those would now become the town's responsibility. I have no problem signing a contractual letter that if there's anything that needs to be complete, we will take the responsibility of that, even if the town has approved the road. Okay? Thank you, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Playing a little hurt tonight, sorry.
All right.
I'm Muriel Kramer, thirty-nine North Street, also the chair of the planning board in Hopkinton. I really appreciate the opportunity, um, to speak tonight. I appreciate everybody's attention. We understand that we are, um, supporting the energy and the effort that is a little bit outside of regular process. Um, the road itself is a little outside of regular process as well. And I think that we can all agree that the town is benefiting from this intentional bypass road that offloads traffic. And one of the concerns, uh, with the bus, bus situation that I notice is that the traffic does not stop as the buses load and offload because of the design of the adjacent streets. I personally recognize that, that this might not be possible at this juncture. I would like to think that we could all engage in the problem solving. I really applaud the residents who have been persistent, patient, done an awful lot of work to put the facts in front of us. I appreciate the developer who seems to be willing to do what, um, needs to be done to make this possible. If, uh, the planning board is, uh, is in full support of finding a way that is legal and practical, pragmatic, increases the safety and acknowledges the fact that we have, we have for all intents and purposes accepted that road two and a half years ago when we had a big ribbon cutting. And I'm, I'm told that that was thanks to the planning board of its day. Whoever, whoever invited everybody, whoever cut the ribbon, whoever invited all folks to, to use the road as if it is a public way. I think that there is, there is, uh, some responsibility, uh, on all of us to find a way to increase the safety here on the road. And I think that none of the construction, none of the housing construction is going on on that bypass road. It's a slightly different situation.
Ten seconds.
Thank you. The planning board has asked the town attorney to, to, uh, in, help us understand the best way forward in a different situation to make this possible. So I'm just here to ask everybody to jump in with these lovely parents and these wonderful families, um, and help us find a solution that really does work and work for the long term.
Thank you.
What do you mean? My name is Nishit, thirty-seven Spruce Street. How can I show you a slide here? Thank you. I just want to highlight, uh, sometimes you guys have seen these photographs. I'll just focus on these two photographs. This shows one view of, uh, coming from Franklin Road intersection towards Legacy Farms North. But assume a similar way, it's a curve here, right? As I highlighted, it's a curve. As a father, when I stand this morning, uh, I ask my daughter, please stand behind me because if one of the driver is distracted and is on the phone, he will barge over all of you kids. And this thing has happened in past, in many other places where a distracted driver just hit the kids. This damage is, is not worth required, it's not expected. We should not worry about this as a parent, neither should, this town should. I don't know what the technicalities are. These, my neighbors have been working on it, you guys have been working on it, Roy has been working on it. But I just want to request all of you to come together, whatever the apprehensions, everyone has, just please consider safety of kids above that. It's appeal of father. Thank you.
All right. We're all set? Mr. Terry?
Thank you. Thomas Terry, seventeen Maple Street. I was glad to hear Mr. McDowell speak of his gracious offer to take care of us in case there are any backfalls that we might come upon. I would suggest maybe he would increase the bond rather than have it done with just promises. The bond is, what is it, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars now? If we can increase that bond to a million and a half, to two million, it could take care of some of the possible contingencies that might turn into large expenses later. And, uh, I'm sure Mr. Westerling wants to speak too. And I know the Conservation Board has sent a letter out. Did you read the letter?
Got it, read it.
Yeah.
And that's very important that this letter should go into the readings of this, 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 uh, someone should read that letter if it's, if it isn't a handout before, uh, well, you're the ones that are gonna vote. I have a one question. Once Legacy South was, was built, um, there was a while that they had to come up to East Main Street and they were, they got on the buses there. That went on for like two, two and a half, maybe even three years. And that was all that Legacy could do for them, which was fine. I hope the people that are sitting in the back tonight don't think that the buses are gonna pick those kids up at their house. Those kids are still gonna have to walk the hill. And that hill's like a quarter mile, just like this. I'm sorry. You're gonna have to get in your car and you're gonna have to bring your kids up and you're gonna have to park them along the side of a road. It's gonna be called North Road. Not North Road where it is now, it's gonna be North Road up a little further. True, probably thirty or forty percent, being very fair, might be able to walk to that area. The other sixty percent of the people are still gonna have to be transported by car.
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds? I would suggest that Mr. McDowell gets involved with this a little more extensively since some of the projects that he said we're gonna do haven't been done, like the sidewalk on East Main Street and, uh, the traffic light. So to think all this is gonna be planted and done by April thirtieth? All I know is Christmas is the twenty-fifth of December. And Roy McDowell can't tell me that this is gonna be done by April thirtieth.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. All right. So, there's no more public comments, uh, I will entertain a vote to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? It carries. Board deliberation. Points to consider. Construction of the road is not complete. What is the town's liability in this regard if it accepts the road? The statute requires that a layout plan be filed with the town clerk at least seven days before a special town meeting vote? Is there a plan showing the layout for the board to refer to in its vote? Will there be one? And I'm going to, Mr. Kamala, there, there are no answers to those two questions, right? That we have right now? I mean, I have not... I mean, I have not seen a plan.
Yeah, we, we have not received a plan, we...
You have received the as-built plans for Ludlow when we built the road. You do have those.
Um... That'll be helpful.
We need Mr. Westerling.
We need Mr. Westerling.
Mr. Westerling.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Through the Chair, we do have the record drawings of the road as it was constructed up to base course. But I don't know if that conforms to the requirements of the layout. And that's the plan that Mr. McDowell's reflected.
So let's just, if we could on that, one point. Don't run away, Mr. Westerling. The layout plan is the as-built drawing of everything along that roadway. Is that a fair statement?
It's the projected. I don't believe it's the as-built. The as-built can't be done until after everything is built.
Well, that's what this typically is. And that's when we typically accept the road. That's why I'm asking the question.
Mr. McDowell?
When Ludlow built the road, they built everything, sewer, water, gas, sidewalks, base coat paving. So everything has an as-built. The only thing that's remaining is the finished coat of asphalt and the planting. Other than that, there are as-built drawings for all the utilities in the road itself. The contours, the grades, everything. We handed it to the town, but for some reason, if you don't have it, we can get them for you.
So do you have all those various plans?
Again, through the Chair, we have the record drawings, the so-called as-built plans through the base course and all the utilities. But my understanding of a layout plan is more of a meets and bounds of the actual ameesements of the actual road layout.
So, yeah, so that's why I'm asking this question is this. I think there's a lot more to this. And please, folks, don't read into my questions here about where I'm at on this whole thing. I'm just trying to get some facts figured out first. The layout plan that we typically vote and accept at town meeting, we've done forever, has all that other stuff in it. It has the landscape plan that I would know you would do a great job with. But we need all the other stuff, we need all the legal easements, we need everything included in that. We don't have, I'm not aware of anything like that.
I, I, I will find what you do have and for whatever reason what you don't have, we can get you.
Quickly?
How soon would you like it?
It's eight o'clock now, we got a special town meeting, we have dates, we already have problems with dates.
I mean, we can get you what exists. If for some reason there needs to be a survey or something like that, then that's obviously going to take probably a week or so. If it needs a survey, I don't know if it does.
I'm not saying that this is your issue or your fault, this situation, it is what it is.
You know, it's the old expression, I'm trying to help you, help us type of thing. So I think we're all rowing in the same direction. So the question is, whatever you need, I just need to know what you don't have so I can give you what I have. And if there's something beyond that, I'm happy to pursue it.
And I've had many conversations with you about this as well, which is something that I'm going to bring up towards the end of this.
Okay. Thank you.
So I've got other questions and comments if I could. So Mr. Tedstone outlined, Chair, outlined a process that is typically followed in Hopkinton in, at the beginning of this open, uh, public hearing. And you listed various steps along the way and various dates things had to be submitted and various dates things had to happen in advance of the town meeting. Several of those, the timeline for those to happen is well after the town meeting. So as the, as the chief executive officials for the town of Hopkinton, we have a problem in that we want to help, but the process as we have it today frankly doesn't allow us to help tonight because we don't have everything sorted out. We don't have this plan, we can't vote on accepting that plan and many other, many other things. So there's a, there's a challenge with that. I'm a little surprised to hear about speed limits. Is the Chief of Police still here?
He is.
Chief Lee? This is our Chief of Police, folks. Does an excellent job on behalf of one of the safest communities in America to live.
The safest.
The safest.
The safest.
Including an arrest yesterday or today, whatever it was? Is there a speed limit on Legacy Farms North?
I believe it's 30, 30 miles an hour.
Is it posted?
Yes.
Okay, so...
But there is a slight problem with it being a private road, it's tough.
Can you enforce that speed limit?
No.
Can we put a radar sign up there saying, folks, it's 30 and you're going 50, slow down?
We can do preventive measures.
Have we done that?
We did at the beginning of the, the school year. And we've had extra patrols up there, especially, but again, when it gets a little slick out with the ice and things of that nature, but...
Okay, so it sounds like we have a safety thing outside this whole discussion. And if there's anything the department can do to increase the patrols, get the rate, get the, the flashing sign up there about the speed goes? And let's make sure we have speed limit signs posted across that, that whole length of road. I, I've gone up there several times, I don't remember seeing a sign, but I'm really not looking for it, so. Okay, and then there was another comment a minute ago that the bus will, or may not go into the neighborhood itself to pick up the kids. I don't think that that's necessarily the case. I'm not on the school committee, I'm not on the transportation committee within the schools, and I'm not the business officer for the school. But I do think that the buses likely in a neighborhood of that size will make their way into some portions of that neighborhood and set up three or four stops. I don't know. But to say that once we do all this, they're still going to have to come all the way out to the North Road, I, I'm not sure if we can say that's necessarily the case tonight. So I just don't want to create any confusion out there. We don't know where the bus is going to go, that's the school committees and the school business directors, transportation directors. But in where I used to live in town, which is another neighborhood on the far west side of town, the bus came into that neighborhood even though there were some main roads nearby. So let's, we'll get some facts on that before we go too far. So in general, Mr. Chair, and we're at board deliberation now, or discussion anyway, here, here is my thoughts. For 300 years, Hopkinton has been developing as a once very rural community and now it is a bustling Boston suburb. That's a fact, okay? With a lot of great characteristics to it, great schools, great people, a lot of new people moving to town, a lot of energy, all kinds of really good stuff. But we have a process in place that's built for a town, or a process in place that's been set for a town that's developed over a period of 300 years. Nothing like the development we've seen that we voted on as a community, just so everybody in the room knows. The town made a decision not to buy the land. The town made a decision to let the developer move forward with the development that so many people now enjoy living in. So we knew, the town knew what was coming. But we didn't adjust some of the things that we probably should have adjusted to figure this situation out. I don't think we anticipated this situation frankly, because I was on the board at the time, Mrs. Kramer was on the board at the time. Mr. McDowell did a great job working with the community back then. And busing and not being able to pick up 75 or 85 kids on a wet, nasty morning like yesterday or today or whatever it was, we didn't, we didn't talk about it. I know we didn't talk about it. I'm the father of five kids. I have five kids that have gone through the school system. She's a mother of five kids.
Six.
So six, sorry, 11 between the two of us. Uh, so, and there's all kinds of other kids represented here through, through parents. So I think as one member anyway, our challenge is, we got to find a way to help you. And I want to help you. But I also have all these laws and these rules that I have to follow as the chief, chief executive officer or one of them for the community where we could create other problems, not only for us, but for you guys and the developer. So that's the, the conundrum that we're in. I'm all ears and I'm wide open to trying to find, to try and find a solution. I don't know what that is here tonight, but I'm a big believer in life and business, whatever. There's always a solution out there. Sometimes it's painful to find it. But I think we still have to work together to find that solution. I'm not sure if we can pull that solution off at special town meeting, be very honest with you. I would like to, but I'm not sure we can just yet. If, if others can figure this out in the next couple of weeks and we can get the deadlines met that we have to meet and we can get other sort of town council input that allows us to, to sidestep one or two regulations along the way to make this happen, I would support that because we as a town for 300 years have developed, as I said, in a way that was controlled and measurable. And then we voted as a town to create a new development, a new, you know, village, if you will, in the community. And some of these things were anticipated. So I think that's on all of us to try and resolve. I'd like to find the answer to it, I don't know what it is just yet, so just so you understand where one member's coming from.
Mr. Masrula?
You know, I think everything Mr. Hur said is, is entirely appropriate. I'm deeply sympathetic with, with this issue and I want to find a solution. I just don't know if accepting the, the road is the solution right now. I mean, I think ultimately that's what we, where we need to be. And I'm not sure that we can get it all in order in time for town meeting. That said, it doesn't mean that we will not keep working on it. And we want you in our face, keep coming back because there's got to be another solution. If we can, if we can, if we can't accept the road now, then there's got to be an interim solution in the meantime. It's something that we can keep working on. Safety is of utmost importance. And one thing I would just say is if you know who's speeding and who's running around, take down, take down the license plate, call them up, I mean, they're likely your neighbors. Call them up and say, what are you doing, man, slow down? This is, this is of utmost importance and I think there's, there's something that, you know, we need to find some kind of solution. I'm with you. I want to find a solution, I don't know what it is yet.
Mr. Joe?
Well, I'm all for getting school buses to children and something that we absolutely have to do. And I don't know whether it's going to be some kind of preliminary acceptance or some kind of acceptance with codices or, or what we can do yet. But we'll, promise we'll work on it, we'll keep working on it. Get you something.
Mr. Chair? Sorry. Through the Chair. One thing that Mr. McDowell had mentioned was signing other, other documents to ensure or to give us comfort that the work will get done. Is there anything in particular that you, was it appropriate for me to ask directly? Anything in particular that you had in mind? Is there anything in particular you had in mind that you were willing to sign in order to ensure that these, that this work gets done? Or are there any other kind of interim measures that you had given any thought to?
One of the things I mentioned, we, we signed a contract with Western Nurseries to do the planting. Now whether that gets done on April 30th or May 10th or whatever it is, it's going to be, you know, weather dependent. You can verify with Peter Meszak, who signed the contract with him. He's ordering all the trees now. As far as the paving goes, we haven't walked in there until one thing is done. We have to raise all the manhole covers and pave it. That's probably a, maybe a three-day operation, probably five days for the manholes. So it's not a big deal. And then at that point, I think we'll be substantially complete. There's a few signs that are missing that I've noticed in trucks have knocked down, so we've got a few signs to replace.
Where are you with the Conservation Commission?
Conservation Commission will have, we can't decide on a point at any time. Unless it's done, we will get that. So I'm not too concerned about that. All the basements we'll put in at the time of building the road. And there will be certification at that point. As far as, if we have a bond right now, it's like $770,000. The estimates to finish the work between the landscaping and paving is about half of that. So that bond is probably twice the actual work's going to cost. If it made the town more comfortable and, you know, we, we signed a contractual letter, anything that's not done, we'll be responsible for, even though we're responsible for it anyway, we're happy to do that because we're happy. I want to leave it this year, but with all the construction, it was general consensus that it would have been damaged. I will tell you, in Legacy North, all the housing on the right side for whole thing, pretty much, in fact, they're going to be finished in the next couple of weeks. And a little bit more they're doing, I think will be done this winter. So paving in the spring, there'll be no more of that back and forth across from the east side to the west side. I think it'll pretty much be done. The work will be down, coming up partially up Legacy North and then turning left. Or they'll be going up Pips at some point.
Mr. Hur?
So a couple of other thoughts, and as I'm thinking through some of this, you know, one of the challenges before us tonight, we've, we've closed the public hearing portion, at least for the public input, but the hearing itself is still ongoing because we're in deliberation. But we're, as part of the process of getting ready for special town meeting or annual town meeting is we would vote to accept the plan. Right? You just heard, we don't even have a plan to look at. So how are we going to mechanically do that tonight?
I actually think you have a plan, I just don't know what the, I think it's...
Yeah, but Roy, in terms of what we're supposed to do tonight, because this is live democracy in action here, I don't have it. It's not on my iPod, it's, it's no, it's not iPad, it's not anywhere. So how do we vote on a plan for that? The, the second thing I would say is perhaps we should continue this public hearing to another date because we have a couple more meetings before special town meeting. And that could give us some time through the planning board and their process and maybe some process of ours within the town manager's office. Work with Mr. Westerling, work with the developer and see if we can figure something else out. Because if we vote no tonight, that's a problem at special town meeting because the mechanics won't have been checked off to get something done at town meeting itself. If we vote, I mean, it would be, it would be logical to vote no because we don't have a plan to vote yes on. Right? So that's why I would suggest maybe we continue this a little bit. The other thing I would suggest is that we think about, so you folks, the, the petitioners have submitted a warrant article. And I put my hands up like that because Muriel will know what I'm talking about here because she's a former assistant town moderator. There's four corners to that article. And when you get to special town meeting, you're, you're going to a lot about four corners. In other words, the article warns the residents that this is what we're going to talk about for this issue. And you got it, your debate, dialogue and everything has to be inside the four corners of the article. We can't talk about the Legacy Farms wastewater treatment plant during a debate about the Legacy Farms busing situation. Okay, so you got to stay focused on the article. And then beyond the article, there's the motion. And the motion asks town meeting to make a decision on, on the, the topic at hand. So the motion could be, we move that the town of Hopkinton bypass all its rules and regulations and accept the Legacy Farms from North Road as is with the bond supplied by the developer for five years to finish the work, something like that. Or it could say, we move that the town of Hopkinton direct the Board of Selectment and Planning Board to jointly work together to create a means in which to accept this town road hereafter town meeting concludes as long as the following have been met. So that's a little bit different motion than I think you might be considering at this time. And that would, I think, maybe give everybody a little bit of flexibility to actually get it done right, not only for the town, but for the residents in Legacy Farms too. What that would do is maybe delay things another month or two, but I don't think it would push it out that much further. So something to kind of noodle on as petitioners and maybe something to the planning board as well as ourselves to consider too. But I, I don't think we have enough information to kind of really continue here this evening. And if we do continue and, and things don't go the way I would like to see it go, then we're kind of dead in the water and then it's puts off to another, who knows? We could be having special town meetings every month for a while, like from what I'm hearing. But it could go at least till next annual, till next May. So just something to think about, that's all I want to say.
So, um, so Mr. McDowell and I have had discussions. The, there's nobody sitting in this room that doesn't put the safety of all of our children as paramount. Absolutely. There's Brian, Muriel, they've got 100 kids, I've got two. We, you know, my kids have to walk 700 feet to a bus stop, but that's just my driveway. But nobody, nobody is trying to compromise the care and safety of your children for, for a couple of dollars or, or a couple of million dollars. Nobody, nobody wants to, to exchange those two. Mr. McDowell and I had a discussion and it involved many different departments. What he had offered, and, and what you guys presented was all very true. What you left out was the fourth option. The fourth option was a lot, a parking lot on the corner of East Main and Legacy that Mr. McDowell offered to come in, strip the loom. I spoke to him a week, I think it was a week before school started. And he said he probably couldn't have it done before the day of school starting, but within the week. Strip the loom, strip the subsoil, bring in gravel, grade it, compact it, pave it. So many, many cars, many cars could go there safely and maintain it, plow it, the whole nine yards. Everybody was on board. Every department that was on that... Every department that was on that was on board. Mr. McDowell was on board. The school committee was on board pending the approval of a Google poll that went to the neighbors. And if I'm not mistaken, the data that came back from Dr. Kavanaugh said that 82% of the neighbors were not interested in coming up with that because it was an extended distance from the existing bus stop. So there's sometimes, I do have a little method to my madness. When I asked you what the percentage, what you thought the percentage was for drivers versus walkers, it said 95%. So if 95% of your children were in a car and you were driving maybe a hundred yards, maybe 400 yards, maybe half a mile. The safety of your children on that Google poll said to me, you are more concerned about the distance away from your house than the safety of your children. No, you may not talk. Nobody can talk. We're in deliberations now. This was a plan that was amenable at zero cost to the town. The transportation company had agreed to change their route to pick the children up there. Mr. McDowell agreed to pave this lot with 67, however many cars it would take to take care of that, plow it, maintain it until everything was done and they went through the normal channels and approved the road. Your anger and concern is certainly understood here and it's well taken. The fly in the ointment, as I see it, the transportation company just flat out refuses to go down this road. So lost in all this, all this hysteria on the, on the road approval, the quick road approval is the transportation company. If the transportation, and we, we asked them and we begged them, Mr. McDowell begged them, everybody asked them, what would it take? We offered to, Mr. McDowell offered to pay for the rider to increase their insurance and the transportation company said no. So again, I'm all for the safety of your kids and I'm sorry if the message that I'm portraying now may, make you think that I'm not. But our job as the, as the board of selectmen in this town is to follow policy and procedure and to make policy and procedure. So as of right now, as Mr. Hurd said and Mr. Nasrullah agreed, the way that our policy and procedures are set up in town, I don't think that we have enough time right now to get this on the special town meeting, our warrant.
Well, it's on.
I mean, to have the article. But I think that, I mean, I don't know, I haven't spoken to Mr. McDowell since it was, since that Google poll shot it down. I don't know if he would be amenable still to doing that. But that was a, that was a, a solution that I thought was very amenable to the town at a low cost, oh, zero cost to us, and it would have provided all your safety. So I don't know, that's my point of view. So you can all sit there and shake your head and disagree with me, but that's my point of view.
Okay, so, so...
But we're done.
So the way, and there's, you know, the process of how we do things in a town meeting form of government, which we are, is there's open hearings and then we close the hearings so that we can then debate with each other, right? We did, we voted to close the public hearing, yes we did. So, so you had to bear with us while we do this, okay? The problem is with all of this, if you put the map of this neighborhood back up there and Legacy North Grove, we passed it, there's four or five logical places where a bus is eventually going to stop. Okay? So I don't think the folks are looking to try and get everybody having the bus in their front door, beeping the horn and having somebody run out, you know, with their lunchbox laid. It's they're going to get to those four or five spots, which is not an unreasonable request. So why would we just say it's the parking lot or nothing if we can figure out a way between now and special town meeting to actually make that happen?
I'm absolutely amenable. I'm absolutely amenable.
I thought you were just saying, this is my own thing.
I'm saying, I'm saying this is something that was presented back before school started, long before the special town meeting came even into play and it was shot down by a Google poll. So...
Okay. So...
If we can get this on the, on the, I mean, if we can make it so everything works and it, and it doesn't leave the town on the, on the hook for potentially hundreds and hundreds and thousands of dollars, then I'm all for it. Don't think that I'm not for it. But what I'm saying is, you know, everything has been presented. There have been, you know, A, B, C, D was left out, D was presented and it was shot down.
But if the citizen's petition is on the warrant, we're signing the warrant Friday morning at 7:00 AM, whatever it is, we're doing it, it's going to be on there. They don't have a choice of that because they did their job. Okay? So now it's a matter of beyond getting on the warrant, the petitioners also have to have a bunch of boxes checked, including the select board doing their thing, before town meeting can say it's in order and can actually have a positive vote to, to accept. Okay? And that's what we're talking about now. So your, your position is not just the parking lot or any, or nothing, but you're just arguing that that was a legitimate interim solution to the problem. Okay? And maybe that will be discussed on town meeting floor as part of this inside the four corners of the, of the article or the, of the warrant.
And if this doesn't, if it doesn't go at town meeting, I'm happy to discuss with Mr. McDowell to see if we can get this thing taken care of still to make sure that your kids are safe, if it doesn't go at town meeting.
So what do you guys think about the idea of just continuing this to a future date? Mr. Kamal, can you weigh in on all this?
Clearly continuing the hearing is an option with the understanding that the select board hears until December 20th, no, December 2nd, yeah, December 2nd to file its layout vote with the town clerk as well as the layout plan to be filed with the town clerks.
I'm sorry, the last piece?
The, as well as filing the layout with the town clerk's office. So it's both the vote as well as the layout.
Mr. Deegan, are you in agreement with that?
That is the timeline for it, yes.
This is your town clerk, folks. He's the one that tracks all this stuff. Okay?
So to chime in on the question of, of continuing, I mean, I think that seems to make logical sense right now. So if there is a chance of getting everything we need before special town meeting, then let's do it. Let's get it. If we can approve it, we can get it all done. I'm, I'm all in favor. My, my hesitation is can it be done in time? But if we can continue and give it a try, let's give it a try.
So for the continuing, buddy.
For the continuing the meeting, yeah.
So if I could, Mr. Chair. Mr. McDowell, a lot of this is going to fall on you to meet the criteria you need to meet to make this happen. Can you make this happen?
Well, I can make happen what I can make happen. It may be that there are things that weren't done on this as built, so I don't know until I look into it tomorrow. I'll have a better idea tomorrow what was given to us and what was given to the town vis-à-vis the as-built drawings for the road, but I will pursue it.
And let's say Mr. McDowell delivers, is able to deliver in good effort and good faith, which he's always worked under in Hopkinton, he can deliver 90% of it. And let's say we can approve somehow some of that and then we send a special message to town meeting through the moderator that, you know, the motion needs to have certain things in it because we can't, we couldn't pull it all off. And maybe that would be something that could work and then we could really get this thing going. So I, I have hope that we can figure it out, but I, again, look to Mr. McDowell. He has to kind of meet his obligations as best he can. And then Mr. Westerling's got to get the rest of it sorted out in his mind and with town council and then get it in front of us as soon as possible. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that we table the, or continue the town meeting to a future date.
We need a motion for that?
No, motion is needed. Again, to be clear, the board is continuing its deliberations.
Yeah, we, yeah, so we will continue the deliberations at a future date. The public input, we got it. You guys want this done. We're trying to figure it out. So we don't need to hear that again, but we got to figure it out. So I would, we don't need a motion for that, but we will continue the deliberations.
Absolutely.
Can I say one quick thing? I think another option in the meantime too is to kind of split, split up that bus stop, have one on each end, then we're only going to have 15 cars at one, 15 at another. I could work with the school bus coordinator or something like that, just a small temporary fix, just so you don't have that volume of cars, 30 to 45 cars. And I'm sure the, the busing company would be amenable to that.
Okay, sounds so easy that, have you tried to, do you want the transportation company?
Assign certain families to a certain bus stop?
So our next agenda item on our meeting tonight is special town meeting. So I would certainly suggest that you all stick around because it has everything to do with, you guys are, I believe, one-third of what we have on the docket for a special town meeting. So we would certainly hope that you would stick around and chime in on that. All right? All right, so for the first time in my chairmanship, we are behind schedule. So now the select board will consider matters and articles regarding the special town meeting on the December 9, 2019 special town meeting. Mr. Kamal.
Yeah, through the chair, this is purely an administrative update. Just want to remind the public that the special town meeting warrant clause is November 21. To date, we have received the following articles. Number one, there is a citizen petition regarding the main street corridor project with two components. One rescinding Article 47 vote from 218. Second piece is a request that town meeting direct the select board to cease all work relating to the main street corridor project. The second petition is the one that the board just discussed. This is in relation to legacy farms North Road. We have also received four articles from the school department. The first is requesting a sum of money to complete the feasibility schematic design, engineering and related services for the renovation, alteration and associated improvements at the Hopkinton High School. The second article is requesting funding for the construction, reconstruction, renovation, alteration and associated improvements of the Hopkinton High School. In other words, design, provide the documents that are required for the construction and if approved, then move forward to the construction. And then third is a request for a sum of money for the engineering, design, construction, reconstruction, renovation or alteration and associated improvements related to the purchase and installation of modular classrooms at the Elmood School. And then the fourth article also is a sum of money for the engineering, design, construction, reconstruction, renovation or alteration and associated improvements related to the purchase and installation of modular classrooms at the Hopkins School. So those are the four articles from this school department. And again, the warrant is open until November 21.
How much are these sums?
Yeah, they're numbers that have been put forth. In terms of the design, I think the number that is put forth is 500,000. The number for the high school construction work is 4.5 million. The number for the modular classrooms at Elmood is 2 million. And then the number for the modular classrooms at Hopkins School is 3 million.
Would all those be bonded, Mr. Kamal? Meaning a borrowing?
Based on past practice, the, the last three, yes. There may be options to address the first one, which is the design, 500,000.
500, okay. Would that have to be, would those numbers have to be inside the FY '20 budget because the special town meeting is now? Or they still have to wait till July 1 to be fully appropriated?
It, it depends on when the projects may be executed. We haven't had that discussion. We just received this information this, this morning.
So if I keep going, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So if you're, for those who are watching earlier, we had a chart up by the CFO showing the debt service numbers for the community over the next 20 or 30 years. And it showed that, and the reason why is it showed a big drop in the debt service numbers, meaning what we have to pay on an annual basis, because the Hopkinton High School, which opened 20 years ago, is coming off debt service schedule next September. That's a big reason why some of that's happening along with a couple of other projects. I suspect the fire station might be in that number two a little bit. Anyway, so while $10 million, when we're all sitting here right now, special town meeting, $10 million, what the heck? Sounds like a lot of money for a little old special town meeting. I'm, I'm a little confused about how that money would come to be and would it have to wait until July 1? But I'm not too concerned about it if the community believes we need to act on these projects because that debt service schedule is going to allow for some investment in the community, in the schools again, if, if that's what we decide, without really breaking the bank. So it sounds like a lot, but the debt service on that can fit in that graph, I think, pretty easily based on some of the other things that we are carrying. What's our total debt amount at this time and coming out of those, in that debt service schedule? Tim, what is that number? Is it 60 million or something like that?
No, I don't have it with me right now, sir. I, I have it downstairs. I think it's closer to like 70 in the general.
Okay, so we've got, let's say, let's just for conversation sake, let me make it easy. Let's say we got about $75 million worth of debt that we pay the principal and interest on every year like we pay our mortgages at home, right? So if some of that 75 million is going to finally get paid off in September of 20 and we have to wait until July 1 of 20 to implement these projects, because I can't imagine how we would do it in the same fiscal year that we're already working under, it could be a fairly smooth transition. So while it sounds like a lot of money, I don't think we should hit the panic button just yet until we understand how this is all going to sort of work through the financial process to actually go in to get the money.
Mr. Kamal, do you need anything from us?
Not at this point. As I said at the beginning, this is an administrative update.
Okay. Great. So moving forward, we will now speak about the Eversource Electric requesting permission to perform night work, South Street, West Main Street. Select Board will consider approving Eversource's, Eversource Electric's request to perform night work and working beyond the hours of the noise bylaw. The construction schedule will be Friday night through Monday morning, 24-hour workdays, 12-hour shifts, five crews through 17 weeks. The town of Hopkinton's DPW issued a notice of hearing in order to show cause why permits should not be suspended or revoked on August 2, 2019 to Eversource Energy and United Civil Inc., the holders of a consolidated town road opening permit and trench safety permit. Following a formal hearing, the town manager as hearing officer concluded that Eversource and United Civil violated applicable provisions of the town's street opening permit teams condition, I'm sorry, terms, conditions and policy, Mass. Journal, Chapter 82A and 520 CMR 14.00. On two occasions while excavating that, subject to compliance with certain conditions before recommencing excavation, the suspension of work pursuant to the permit should be lifted and the permities allowed to complete their excavation in connection with Eversource's transmission line project. And that the hearing officer's decision be shared with the select board for filing and reference with respect to future applications for permits or other legal authorizations from Eversource and United Civil. The proposal reflects agreement between DPW director and Eversource on the way forward. So we will consider a request from Eversource, blah, 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 blah. Mr. Kamal?
Yes, through the chair, as you read in the introduction of this particular item, we are here because there was a suspension of the work that Eversource was performing on South Street. And as part of resolving that issue, Eversource was found at fault. We also requested that the decision be referred to the select board for your record and also for consideration in future discussions of similar matters with Eversource. In addition, we also felt that the work should proceed. And to that end, there were several meetings between Eversource And to that end, there were several meetings between Eversource and the DPW Lead Director, resulting in the proposal, uh, that is before the board tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Kamala, thank you very much for the invite, uh, for here tonight. My name is, uh, Jack Lopes, uh, with Community Relations of Eversource, and I'm with...
Sean Lozier, also from Community Relations.
As mentioned on the article, if I could just make one quick correction on that article that was read. You had mentioned about transmission lines. It's not, they're not transmission lines, they're distribution lines. It's the lines that actually feed the businesses and the residences, uh, within the, the town. The transmission lines are the high voltage lines. So, it's, it's a different voltage. Um, we are here due to the suspension, uh, like it was mentioned, and we, uh, we've worked with the town, uh, on a correction for that. And that's what we're here today to see if that correction would be approved, uh, by the board, and, uh, we could, uh, continue with this project, uh, next spring, uh, during regular, uh, construction season. Uh, I'm also here with, uh, United Civil, our contractor, that's doing the work out there. So, any questions, any concerns, issues that you have, please let us know.
Sean, are you United Civil?
No, sir, I'm, I'm with Eversource as well.
Yeah, United Civil.
United Civil, were they the ones that, um, that caused the suspension, I mean, the, um, the penalty?
Correct.
Was this the thing with the plates?
Yes.
Yeah. So, uh, so let's go to the board.
How many KV are you guys putting in there, underneath, what is that, fifteen KV or thirty-five?
Yeah, that's thirteen eight. Thirteen thousand eight hundred volts, which is, uh, part of the expansion project that we did at the station where we installed it, their transformer. Now, we have that capacity available, uh, for reliability issues in the town to make things be, uh, better. So, now, in order to get that power out of the station, uh, we need that duck bank with additional circuits.
So, I've worked in the electrical construction business and around fifteen KV my entire life. That's why I asked that question, and I'm still not convinced or understanding what was the issue, Mr. Kamala. Can you tell me in regular terms, besides that, what the problem was?
Yeah, the issue was that the plates that were used to temporarily cover the trenches that had been done, started moving and presented a public safety, um, uh, concern, uh, to the drivers using South Street. We received several complaints and filings, uh, that we forwarded to our insurance company. And also coincidentally, in fact, one of the town vehicles was damaged by one of the plates.
And have you guys figured out what caused that?
Uh, if I could break, uh, bring up, uh, uh, United Civil to answer those questions, it'd be more appropriate for those, uh, tips.
How you doing? So, the plates were moving, guys?
Yes.
And have you figured out why?
Yeah, we have. You know, there was a few different scenarios on, on why they moved. I think one of them, you know, we have engineered plating designs for all of our excavations that are based on traffic flow, weights of vehicles, so on and so forth. We believe that the two incidents when it happened were, um, likely overweight vehicles going at excessive speeds beyond what we anticipated. We've since had engineers take a look at our drawings, made a much more robust design for our road plates. Uh, we recessed them. We were actually able to use that design on Main Street successfully to finish, um, the part that was in the, the...
The MDOT right of way.
MDOT right of way without issue. Uh, but, you know, certainly, we, we got off to a rocky start, um, not anticipating the amount of load that was going to get hit by these plates.
So, she's got a very small little economical car, very contentious about the environment. And it moved on her.
Yeah. I, I got a big bump. I didn't, I didn't complain about it or anything. But I came off four ninety-five and went over it, and it was a big bang and big bump. And you could see it wasn't, it wasn't flush with the road after I, you know, the look at it. At all.
Yeah, part of our redesign was actually recessing the plates into the road. Originally, they were sitting on top of the road, and they were pinned along the edges with railroad spikes and coal patch, kind of a ramping. We believe that's kind of what led to the issue was, you know, the cars maybe having kind of a point load when they went over the, uh, the coal patch. So, the recessing, uh, allows cars to travel without having any, any major bumps, but, um...
So, I lived in Houston, Texas many years ago, and, uh, on the Katy Freeway, which is I-ten, I think, down there, uh, there were plates in place, uh, one night. A car went by, the plates came off, another car went by, it went into the ditch, two people died instantly. So, and sometimes at that intersection, people can go through there at forty or fifty miles an hour when that light's green. Maybe they shouldn't, chief, but they do. I never would do that. But, um, you know, there's some speed can go through, so, you know, I just think back to that situation in Houston, Texas, when I lived there, it was horrific. Uh, we certainly would never want anything like that, so it's a serious situation, and, you know, you guys gotta, you gotta do it right. And we move plates in our business too. It's, it isn't rocket science, but we gotta get it done. But, on the other hand, we need reliable feeders in the ground for our service in the community for electricity, so...
Question really from Mr. Westerling, are you satisfied with the, uh, the solutions and everything they've come up with?
Sure. Through the chair. Turn that mic there towards you. Through the chair, the challenge was for Eversource and United Civil to come forward with a design that did not rely upon steel plates. And they did come forward with two. One of those was to construct and maintain jersey barriers around the construction site for the entire duration that they were in that particular trench, which the police department, the DPW, and the fire department rejected out of hand. Uh, the one that they're proposing now is that they will start construction on Friday evening, work twenty-four hours per day until Monday morning, and have the entire trench protected and barricaded. And by Monday morning, they'll be able to pave it. So, no steel plates will be involved. That will also reduce the construction period from a fifty-week period, which would have had the barricades around, uh, to a seventeen-week period. So, that's the one that we are endorsing. The reason that they're before the, the select board this evening is to be able to work nights, uh, through the weekend. Good. So, Mr. Kamala, when the, uh, when the issue at hand was identified, who was it brought to? From you, from our, from the town, it was brought to whom, Eversource or United? Both.
Both.
So, how were the people that were, uh, guilty of causing this issue? How did they receive that, and how did they react to that?
In, in fact, um, part of my considerations, uh, during the hearing was the fact that, uh, in all the instances, these, these problems were brought to Eversource, um, and the contractors' attention, they responded, uh, immediately, though in an unsatisfactory manner.
Um, is this also the job that they started on the wrong street? No?
There's only two streets, and I don't think, no, I don't think...
Mr. Westerling? Wasn't there, uh, excavation done on Lumber Street?
Lumber Street.
It shouldn't have been? Uh, through the chair, or to the chair, uh, it was done on West Main Street outside of the Mass. DOT section. So, they were, they had a cease and desist order from the town to not work on town roads, but they did work at the intersection of Lumber Street on West Main Street, right in front of where the, uh, the Starbucks is. And the, the, Mr. Westerling? So, the concept of those plates, those steel plates with railroad spikes into coal patch, how does coal, but, now, I don't know, I'm just a nurse, but, how does coal patch hold up to shock absorbing? Or, or how does it anchor in comparison to like a, a poured concrete? Or, would you, would you say that a, a railroad spike through a, a metal plate would, would stop this from happening? On coal patch, not on hot top, on coal? To the chair, uh, that's what was employed on the construction sites, and it was not effective. In fact, one of the steel plates, as was described earlier, fell into the excavation. So, I kind of know all this stuff. And I'm okay with human error. I'm always okay with human error. If people make an honest mistake, I'm fine with that. What I'm not fine with is, once it's identified, the deflection, saying that it wasn't me, it wasn't my fault, it was someone else's fault, and doing that. When, you know, Mr. Hurd just brought up a very valid point, that people could die when it comes to this. So, instead of strapping their boots on and saying, all right, let's take care of it right now, there was pushback and arguments, and that's the part that bothers me. You know, we've, in management, you, you don't always terminate someone for the offense that they make. You terminate them for the reaction of, of, uh, when you identify the, the mistake. So, that's the concern that I have, um, with you guys. I have lots of concerns with Eversource, which we'll, I'm sure we'll get into. But if what you're saying, Mr. Westerling, the, uh, I waited for you to sit down. So, if what you're saying, Mr. Westerling, is, so the problem was identified, a couple of solutions were brought to you. One solution was thrown out, the other one is amenable to you, and it's amenable to your company, it's amenable to Eversource. Is there a reason why we wouldn't approve this to you? Mr. Chairman, I do not believe there is a reason to not approve it. Uh, in fact, the, the use of steel plates will not be employed in this solution.
Is this firm D-CAM certified?
Yes, we are. So, Mr. Kamala, what do you need from us?
Um, a motion from the board to approve Eversource Electric's request to perform night work and working beyond the hours of the town's noise bylaw.
And you said that there were notices sent to the abutters, if they had a concern, or they, you had a meeting with the abutters, concerned about the roadwork at night, and was, no, there's none of that?
How far off South Street is this going to be?
Mr. Chairman, most of the corridor is, uh, within the non-residential areas. There are a couple of homes down at the intersection of West Elm Street. And as we get, uh, even along Hayward Street, you know, there are some that are removed. But the previous night work that was accomplished, we didn't receive any complaints as of yet.
So, one of my concerns, and it kind of goes to a topic soon to be discussed tonight, which is the Main Street project. You know, we've had a lot of contractors do different things, and different contractors do different things on Main Street, on Grove Street. And to your point earlier about, you know, driving down Grove Street, you know, the, the, the black top they put down is for the temporary patch, they're just awful. Like, everyone's cars are getting banged all over the place. You know, is there a way that we can regulate the quality of that patch that's going to be done so that we don't have people banging up cars more than we already have in town because of this other big project we're working on? There you go.
Through the chair, um, the, the condition of the patch that's within Mass. DOT's sector, under Route four ninety-five, was brought to the attention of Eversource, because that is particularly rough and ripply, uh, to use a technical term. That was brought to their attention. No action has been taken to improve that yet. We are beyond the November fifteenth deadline for the winter moratorium. Uh, so that's one concern, is that we're going to have extended stretches of temporary patch. So, I would put it back on Eversource and United Civil as to how they will ensure that we're going to have a smooth, smoother road out there than we see what they've done under Route four ninety-five. So, am I to believe that the existing condition there, that they're not going to come back and fix that before the winter? Um, Mr. Chairman, I don't know. It was brought to their attention, we're beyond the November fifteenth winter moratorium deadline, and no work was done there. Are the plants closed, hot top plants closed? Do you have any intention of fixing what's wrong with that intersection right now, with the roadway?
The way that I almost left is that Mass. DOT is going to let us know if they had an issue with the condition of the pavement. We haven't received any, we've checked it out several times, and we haven't received a kind of notification of, they would like us to make an alternative to that area.
It's amazing how many people are going on that left lane, going towards the gas stations. Everybody's cutting over into the right. I've seen a couple near accidents, because no one wants to be traveling down that road.
So, I live, um, I live in that section of town, and when I'm coming off, uh, West Elm, if I'm turning to go downtown, that left bumpy lane is my only option, because I got traffic coming from the other side. And you're right, I mean, the first thing I'm doing is trying to, trying to get out, because that, it's horrible.
If I may, um, to United Civil, I think as you have heard from the town, when residents, when drivers are not happy, they do not call Mass. DOT. They call the town. We have told you multiple times, that area needs to be fixed. Therefore, I don't think it serves this town for you to be waiting for Mass. DOT to allow you to fix that. I think you already have your permit, you already have your street opening permit. We have told you, fix that patch. That's what we're asking for.
So, that said, I'm really not too inclined in allowing anyone to move forward on anything until things are done and fixed and done correctly. That's my inclination.
What does that do to electric service reliability?
They're not going to do anything till the spring anyways, right? I mean, isn't that what we said, that, that this whole thing is here, you're done working now till the spring anyways?
Okay, so now I'm a little bit more confused. So, we're not here tonight to, quote, lift the moratorium and get this thing going again. Is that what you're saying, because it's not going to happen till the spring anyway?
Isn't that correct, Mr. Kamala?
I, per the decision issued, I have asked that the moratorium be lifted. It is the method of applying the solution agreed to that requires the select board to approve working on weekends and outside the town's noise bylaw.
Okay, so we could do a motion to approve working on weekends and outside the town's bylaw, or whatever it is, as long as the patch, uh, that's currently causing all kinds of angst for drivers is repaired. Correct?
That's the answer.
So, that's the way to do it.
So...
They get what they want, we get...
So, if we say okay today, when are you going to do this work?
We'd be willing to do it right away. However, November fifteenth, we're no longer allowed to work on, on that area.
But we're willing to, we're willing to lift that, potentially. We're potentially...
We would, we would move to do it right away. We would have to engage a paving contractor. You know, that would take a little bit of time, but that's what is possible.
Through the chair, the winter moratorium, uh, the DBW, the Director of Public Works, we work with contractors to allow them to work as late as they can into the season, as long as weather conditions are favorable and hot mix is available, that's the trench. So, we would be, if, if the board granted the ability to work Friday to Monday, we would look at the next weekend that work was proposed, and if it was, conditions were favorable, we will allow... Above freezing? You're talking above freezing, no rain, stuff like that? If they were not favorable, then we would be putting our own staff and fleet at risk. If there was a need to plow in sand and our motor is at risk, we would... So, make no mistake about it, the way the road is, your plow staff is in danger. You're absolutely in danger. You're in danger, going through that, you're going to snap a cutting edge off that's going to go into another car, or bolts that are going to go into another car. It's, it's worse than Hazard County in the nineteen eighties. It's horrible. So, I'd like a way to kind of hold their feet to the fire, to make sure that this is, this whole thing is, and if they can fix what's done, and then start in the, in the spring or whatever, that's fine, but this is, the roads right now are, are absolutely horrible. The road in general. So, uh, I'm trying to figure out what we can do as a board to keep people's, um, make them responsible, make this get done before the, the frost gets here, and before they can, uh, you know, Trumont closes down, and, 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 and. I, I, I want to get it done, and I'm amenable to have you guys come back and finish the work. And if that means you come back on, on, uh, what's today, Tuesday? If you, if you can come back on Friday, work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, get it done. And then by Tuesday, it's hot topped, great. Great. But there has to be some type of mechanism in place to make sure that it's done, and done right. Mr. Chairman, United Civil could be out on the road tomorrow, coal planing and fixing that trench patch under Route four ninety-five. Yep. And if it's to our satisfaction, then they could come back this coming weekend, work Friday to Monday, if where the conditions are favorable. Okay, pending inspection and approval of the existing mess.
So, if I could, uh, Mr. Kamala, you're closer to all this, because you... because you were in part of this hearing. Do you have a motion that you would suggest the board should entertain and takes into account the need to progress with the project, but also take into account the concerns we have about the existing conditions?
Yes, it is possible to construct a motion. However, through the chair, I do have a question for United Civil. How definitive is your commitment to fix the patch under 495? And you'll complete that by when?
We don't coalplan the pavement, but we're going to have to reach out to paving contractors tomorrow. And if they were available as soon as Thursday, we would start right away. Immediately, if available, totally available.
The reason I'm asking is, I'm thinking of suggesting a motion for the board that has a specific deadline by which that work will be done.
I'd put 12-1 in there, Mr. Kamala. I mean, let's be realistic about this week and next week and everyone's life and so on.
So we all know how accurate the weathermen are. I get the weather here in front of me. There's a... It's not bad. We're, you know, we're... A few times, we're going to hit at night 30 degrees. But, you know, an inch of frost, half inch of frost is nothing. 42s, 43s, 30s, 40s, 4, 40, 54, 50. So I don't think you're going to run into a frost deal. So I am a nurse, but in case, I did work in the business for a little while myself. So don't let the nurse moniker throw you off. So I don't think the bash plant's going to shut down. They're hungry. They want as much... They want to sell as much as they can. The weather looks amenable. If you can talk to a paving company tomorrow and get them done as quick as possible, I'm good as long as, you know, we're crossing all the Ts and dotting the Is to make sure that legally, that we're allowed to put said provisions in our acceptance here, saying that I'm okay for them to start the continuance of their excavation based on completion satisfactory inspection and approval from Mr. Westerling and/or whoever else may or may not need to check it, Mass DOT. But we also, I don't want to put that off till the spring because, I mean, I want to have a very concrete date because it's very easy to say, "Yes, I'll do that," and then say, "You know what? I'll see you in May." In May, I'll do it before I do your... So, Mr. Kamala, with that said, I would be... I'd love to hear your motion.
The chair may request a motion to approve Eversource Electric's request to perform night work and working beyond the hours of the noise by law with the following construction schedule. Fridays from 7:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. On Monday mornings, 24-hour days, 24-hour workdays, 12-hour shifts, five crews through 17 weeks, and subject to Eversource completing the repairs on the Mass DOT stretch on West Main by December 1. To the satisfaction of the town and Mass DOT.
I would add a word to that where it says, "And Eversource completing the thing first." And first, Eversource completing blah, blah, blah. In other words, they got to get that done, then this regular stuff can begin thereafter.
As December 1 of respect is expected to be next Wednesday, you know, with the holiday weekend. Now, this construction activity is probably going to take more than one evening. You know, we're probably talking a five, four to five a night event, which would mean, you know, we would have to start the next couple of days.
To coal, a five-day process to coalplan and pave?
I would assume.
So let's go to 12-6, Friday the 6th.
Well, the problem is, is once you start getting... I don't have any...
It's too far out in the weather, you can't tell.
You know, if... So I think we also should put in on that that if the work isn't done by said date, the van is not lifted, like the...
Well, that's why it's first.
That's why it's subject to first.
Well, I mean, they'll still have to come. If they don't get it done and they don't come back and see us until May, they still have to come see us before May. Okay, just because it, you know, the daylight, the day... I mean, this comes and goes. It doesn't mean that this, that everything is lifted. Correct?
So if this motion passes, they have to do this work before they can begin the other stuff they want to do. Okay? If they can't get this done for whatever reason, or they don't do it to the satisfaction of Mr. Westerling and the Mass DOT, they can't begin the other work they want to do. And they're going to have to come back to us because then there's no motion says they can proceed.
You may.
Ultimately, ultimately, United Civil, Eversource.
Yeah.
Any issues out there, please? We have to know what's going on.
28 Fruit Street. You got three double poles on one yard.
We got a lot to do today.
Just let us know any issues that happen out there. Let us know if we can make sure things get done.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right. Nope, no further discussion here. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstained, carried. Okay? Thank you. Town manager report. Mr. Kamala?
Yes. Included in your packet is an update from the town manager regarding the Main Street Corridor Project. And in addition to the information I shared with the board through the packet, there are also two sets of information that I would like to share with the board. As part of addressing some of the questions that are coming up pertaining to the citizen petition that is going to be considered at the December 9th special town meeting, some questions have come up with regard to two items that I want to share with the board. One is, we have received questions regarding what would it take for the town to simple pave this Main Street Corridor Project. So I'm sharing with you tonight the estimated cost as presented by the town's consultants.
So this is from VHB, the engineering firm?
Correct.
Do we have copies for anyone in the public?
Yeah, for members of the public.
Tim? Tim? Ariel? This meeting's catered. Dave? That's good, I'm a nurse, believe me. Mr. Terry? You hungry?
So, Mr. Chair, if I could, please. Mr. Kamala, this estimate is put forward by VHB. But what does this include? So this is assuming the project doesn't go forward? And this assumes that we're going to do everything we can or not everything we can? Is this... Is the intersection, obviously, the intersection wouldn't be in this, correct?
In fact, I think for the benefit of the public as well as the board, I think Dave Daltoya is here. He can explain exactly what is in this contract and what we may not be able to do that alternatively can be accomplished if the Main Street Corridor Project moves forward as was approved by town meeting.
So this bottom line number at 4.68, that would be borne by the town entirely?
Correct.
What was that number?
4.7 million dollars. Which will be owned by... If this does, if this downtown corridor project does not go through, to simply repave the downtown and get it up to par, not changing the intersection, it's 4.7 million dollars.
But would this include... Would this include... Well, Dave's here. Dave, sorry.
Yes.
David, does this include sidewalks? New sidewalks?
Yeah, the estimate in front of you is the... It's an overlay of Main Street from Wood Street to Ash Street, which is pretty much grind up the first inch and a half of pavement, and you put an inch and a half down. In the same place, there's no changes to the curbs. There's no realignment of the intersection. There's no undergrounding. There's no bike lanes. No new traffic signals. And it's repairing the existing sidewalks, which is...
Repairing, what does that mean? Like, patching holes or whole new...
That's an estimate is to replace all three inches of the existing pavement on the sidewalk.
Concrete?
Um, I... Oh, boy. I think it's, what's there now?
Concrete.
If it's concrete now, it would be concrete. But there's no new curbing. It would be resetting the existing curb.
Would it be adding sidewalks to places where there's no sidewalk on one side or the other?
No, it's just, it's a simple... New pavement is more or less what you get. And it includes the infrastructure for the drainage improvements because that's... We consider that a necessity as part of the project. Is upgrade the existing drainage system, which is insufficient right now.
And, Mr. Daltoya, when we do that, does that... Once everything's ground up, before we resurface, would that put us... Would that make us be required to make existing parking spots to current acceptable size?
Yeah, I would think we'd recommend the striping. Meet regular, meet current standards, where so there'd be offsets from curb cuts.
So we would lose, we would lose some parking spots in addition to spending significant more amount of money out of our pocket for this project.
Correct.
Thank you.
And the other one, there'd be no changes to Marathon Way was the other. Everything would kind of stay the same.
Yeah, the doughboy would stay the same.
And I'm also, there's also, there've been questions raised regarding transparency-related issues. I'm sharing with you a listing of all the meetings that have been had with regard to this project where public input has been sought dating back to 2003, when the town held the Voices for Vision brainstorming sessions.
So this, these are all the meetings that have been held, that have been publicly posted and held in conjunction with the downtown revitalization project?
Yes, and other efforts, and other efforts that have been held to gather input from the public. In addition, there've also been questions regarding the bike lanes. And I have two documents that I want to share with the board and the public. This is the visions of...
Hang on, Mr. Kamala, if I could, please. So before we get into other documents, I'm a little... So in, this says, "In October of 2009, the town submits a project need form to Mass Hyatt." Is that similar to a statement of interest by the school department, Board of Selectmen for a new school? Is that like a kickoff process with, for state funding or something?
Yes. You state the problem, you state what the need is, and...
So that was the initial step? It appears that would be the initial step with the state to get the funding, the tip funding. Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
And that's in 2009? Who is the Conway School of Design public forum?
It's the Conway School of Design that was brought in by the town. And in fact, they were also responsible for developing the two documents that I want to share with the board. So again, I think what you will see is that from its beginnings in 2003 with the Voices of Vision brainstorming session and the creation of the Downtown Revitalization Committee, what is now the Main Street Corridor Project has gone through many revisions and changes over the years as it now approaches its final solution. The document I shared with you lists some of the major milestones, including the creation of multiple committees, public and town board meetings, consultant reports, community outreach events that have been compiled to show the significant effort made to involve the Hopkinton community in the plans for the project. Public forums have also been held to provide project updates and to gather resident input. And we have highlighted those in yellow, including meetings at the select board, the updates to the planning board. There's also information that was produced in relation to the town meeting articles that have gone through our legislative process. In summary, the long list of milestones represents the effort of many committees, individuals, and town staff to move the project forward towards a final solution that addresses aspects of each of the three transportation goals laid out, and I need to underscore this, laid out in the town's master plan adopted in April 2017. One, improve and maintain the existing transportation system to provide adequate service to accommodate future growth. Two, provide alternatives to automobile transportation, including bicycle and pedestrian facilities and networks. And finally, improve public safety by addressing the problematic and hazardous intersections. Again...
That was in what year?
The master plan was adopted in 2017. We have also, we've also identified, we've been trying to track this document back in 1952, 1956, this issue was being discussed. And we will make that document available for the public.
I think we have plenty here.
Yeah.
56?
1952 or 56.
I do believe we have one historian who may remember that.
Yeah, Mr. Terry might have been at the meeting.
Terry, were you at that meeting? Were you at that meeting in 1952 when we first brought this up?
He didn't care then.
Yeah. Again, in terms of the bike lane, here's the visions of Hopkinton documents that I want to share with the board. Two, four, five. There we go. And then there's also the Bikeable Hopkinton document. And in fact, this was the context that developed the concept for the separated bike lanes.
So let's back up one second. So there's visions of Hopkinton. Where did this come from?
Through the downtown...
Is that Conway School?
Yes, yeah, prepared for the Downtown Revitalization Committee.
And this is winter 2010?
2010. And then in 2015, the Bikeable Hopkinton report was presented in public, which led to the concept of the separated bike lane.
And that's which report is that? The Bikeable Hopkinton? And these were all published at, obviously, the greatest times? This Bikeable Hopkinton is from what date, Mr. Kamala?
It's 2015.
2015. Is this the Upper Charles Trails Committee was involved in this?
Correct, yes.
Because I've heard from them about that.
So...
Do we have copies of these reports still public?
I believe so.
Is this all...
It's within the next couple of days. It's all in town, I'll tell you something.
Yes, yes.
So is this information that would be in order to present at the special town meeting? Or...
Again, it's a citizen petition. I...
This is up to the moderator.
It's up to the moderator, yeah. But again, I think it may be helpful, again, to reiterate to the public that this information is available for public review on the town website.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess I'm just a little surprised, Mr. Chair, that, I mean, where are we with these documents as far as, are these on the, did I hear something about it? Are these on the website? Have these been on the website? Are these on ClearGov? I assume over the years, they've been up and down, or no?
I'm not sure they're specifically on ClearGov right now. I think they're in the town webpage somewhere.
But in the years, they were out and circulate, these were circulated.
Oh, yes.
Sure.
I remember the visions of Hopkinton. I don't remember the Bikeable Hopkinton, honestly.
In twenty fifteen, we were on the board, because this was brought also to a select board meeting, yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to say...
And you are?
Nine North Street, um, yeah, no, I get it. Um, Chairman of the, uh, the Planning Board, I wanted to let you know in response to, um, a very reasonable request by many members of the select board at our last meeting, that we will consider and take a vote in support of, um, that's an up or down thing. Obviously, I'm not promising support, but we will consider all of this information. We appreciate, um, that it's all been put together in a format that we can research and be prepared. Um, we're just gonna make, um, make an official vote as a planning board before special time meeting, at our next meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Great, thank you.
I guess in summary, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
I, I, you know, for me, uh, having been around a while, along with colleagues in the room, this transparency thing has kinda chewed on me a little bit as I hear it in the, in the community, that we're not transparent about a project that we've been talking about forever. Um, and then to see this, it's a little bit overwhelming, 'cause I kinda looking through here going, I remember that, I remember, I mean, I'm looking back at sort of my life here, the last fifteen years. Um, there's been a lot of transparency, in my view, looking at this. I, I assume we can click on to these things, if there's an electronic document?
Correct.
Can we get, can you circulate an electronic document to the board and make that available to the public? Because if you can click on this, then I don't have to go find another piece of paper, right?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on it. There's links to videos of the meetings and there's links to sign sheets and things.
That would be very helpful to help the community understand that, in fact, their town government has worked hard to put it out, that this is what we're working on. Okay, thank you.
Any other board members have anything on that? No? Mr. Kamala, moving forward?
Yeah, I, I think the, the take from our tonight's discussion is that, uh, the board is encouraging us to distribute this information as widely as possible, um, including during press releases.
I would think that we should give this out to our friends?
Post haste.
In the media, sure?
Yeah.
That it?
That's all.
Right. Where's my sheets here? Uh, what about, about a budget update?
Yeah, a budget update, I wanted to let the select board know, um, we are getting a good sense as to what the budget might look like. Um, we have received the budget submissions from town departments. Uh, we've also received indications from, uh, our school colleagues as to what their budget might look like.
Thank you, Mr. Kamala. Uh, liaison reports.
Uh, I attended the school committee meeting the other night, uh, during their budget discussion. For a few minutes, I got to listen in. Uh, growth in the schools continues to be, uh, at a very vigorous pace. Uh, we have great schools. Those schools are doing a great job with the children of Hopkinton, and they're producing great candidates or graduates that are great candidates to go on to college or do other things in their life as they so choose. Um, you know, the community's attracting a lot of people because of that, and, uh, also because of that, the cost to operate the schools is increasing, and we're gonna have to be very mindful and figure out how we bu, balance this all out in the coming months. Uh, I think some of us have received emails from concerned folks that we're not supporting the schools because we didn't do it in the budget message a month ago, and I explained, uh, to the school committee members, they knew that, but I wanted to kinda get it to their constituent crowd watching, that, uh, the process is very early and that, um, we'll do everything we can to support the strong, very strong asset in our community, being the schools, uh, but not to hit the panic button too early because we're well early in the process. And I also suggested that because of the special town meeting, the focus on the budget, which would be very intense at this point in a normal year for the next three weeks, it's just physically impossible to do that and prepare for a special town meeting and all that's involved. So, we may be a little bit delayed this year, and Tim, bear with us too, because, uh, we're not necessarily gonna be able to get everything done we need to get done, but we'll get at this, and I'm sure we'll create a successful budget at the end of the day. That was my message to the school committee.
Mary Jo is not here.
So, um, I attended the, uh, planning board meeting, uh, the, the most recent planning board meeting, um, along with Mr. Herr and Mr. Cutino, and, uh, they were discussing a lot of the Main Street corridor project, um, deliberating on it. I think ultimately, Mr. Kamala just now said that they would be holding a vote, um, but at the time, they felt a little uncomfortable, uh, thinking they, believing they needed more information.
Good. Good. So, uh, Veterans Celebration Committee, we had a, a really nice, uh, dinner and a, a good celebration for our veterans at the, uh, Woodville Rotten Gun, as well as, uh, a wonderful ceremony at the Hopkins Senior Center. Uh, Carolyn Dyke was there. She was a, an absolutely wonderful speaker, as always. Um, many of, uh, many of our esteemed and revered veterans in town were there. Uh, you know, kinda working your way through the crowd, you get to hear the tidbits of the, of some of their stories, which are, you know, when you, when you look at your, you know, for me, a bad day is hitting twenty minutes of traffic, getting where I need to go, and these guys are trying to find a way off the beach at Iwo Jima. Uh, it kinda puts a lot of things into perspective. Um, so that was, as suspected, a, a wonderful event. Uh, last night, I attended the, um, Elementary School Building Committee, uh, meeting for the Marathon School. We are close to getting all our final bills done in and paid, and, uh, our lead certification taken care of, and, uh, would be able to, at some point, I, I hope to be able to give you an exact to the dollar number of how much under budget we were. I believe it's in the realm of two million dollars. Um, and that was with the additional four classrooms that were added. So, kudos to that, that group, uh, especially to Joe Mark and Mike Shepherd for keeping everyone on their toes. Uh, and open space, we met the other day, and I didn't go because I was stuck in traffic in Maine. So, um, that's that, that's all I had, and Mary Jo is not here. So, um, that being said...
Future agenda.
Future agenda items. Mr. Herr, did you have any?
Chair, I would ask that we have a future agenda item be a joint meeting with the Hopkinton Board of Assessors and the Hopkinton Select Board to review the, uh, calculations used in the commercial property sector, uh, including and understanding better the income calculations that are part of that process.
Okay. And then the only thing I wanted to add, that I wanted to add before Chief Lee left, was, we touched on it very briefly, uh, they had a, a very, very serious call yesterday that, um, you know, multiple Hopkinton departments assisted in in the apprehension of, uh, an armed robber in many towns. So, when you say multiple departments, you generally think police and fire. It was police and DPW. One of our DPW employees, uh, got the, uh, be on the lookout, broadcast, uh, located the vehicle and called it in. Uh, many towns converged on that vehicle. Uh, the person came out of the house that they were actively...
Second house, right?
A second house, at least the second house in Hopkinton.
Well...
Um, with a, uh, potential deadly weapon, and the, the, our very well-trained police department, um, uh, took care of the issue without using lethal force, which was, um, absolutely wonderful. And I would not have, uh, I would not have cited them had they used lethal force, but they didn't, and that just goes to show what, how well-trained they are and, and what a absolutely wonderful police department we have here. So, uh, you know, it, it's, it's nice to be able to hear stories like that in society when it's so quick to point fingers and say, uh, uh, we won't get into that. But they, they did a really, really good job, and, and they should be very, very proud of themselves. I know that we are. Um, I will, uh, I will reach out to the DPW employee who was, uh, kind of paramount in that apprehension and, and thank him personally. And, um, I wish Chief Lee was here to take some of the updates. So, I told him the job that his department did was, I'd love to hear this, clearly outstanding.
I saw that, thank you. I saw that. I was gonna reply, and I'm like, nope, I'm not gonna reply.
Yes. So, that's all I'm gonna say on that. I believe we're all set. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstained, none, that carries. Thank you, have a good night.